How are we doing on Saturday?
I'm ready.
You ready to go? Okie dokie. Good morning, everyone. We will call to order the Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin, Board of County Highway Commissioners for December 19th, 2019. Austin is on the phone. Thank you for joining us. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Kathy, can I ask you to stand up for us this morning?
May I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if you would all join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12 noon to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. So we will begin with our Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. And I'll start with you, Commissioner Art.
Oh, I have had no meetings.
No meetings, so, okay. Go ahead.
No report.
Judy.
Okay, so on December 10th, we had a LPSI meeting. And we discussed to meet our cert qualifications, we have to pretty much give a schedule of future meetings and a tabletop exercises, whatnot. So we scheduled that. We are talking about having a tabletop emergency discussion in April and a field exercise in May. And I think it's pretty important, we do have the field exercises to get our members and first responders kind of aware of what's going on. On the 13th of December, I attended the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority. That was just a big, basic meeting, nothing really to report from that. The 6th of December, I did attend a workshop at NACO, basically a list of bills passed through the legislature this year that have a financial impact on the counties. I've got a list of those and some notes if anybody would like to look at some of those. It was actually very informational. Some of them are going to have a pretty good effect on the financial aspects. So it's always good to know what's coming up. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, I did attend the workshop with NACO on the 6th with all of them, the new laws and everything. It does affect the county with several things that we have to do and some ordinance as such. And we'll be working with our staff. There's also some for the clerk's office, of course, a great deal, and the recorder's office and such. So they're on top of that with their association. We'll be going over it. We're going to do that. It was excellent. Also, on the 13th was our actual NACO meeting. And they're getting ready for our big legislative conference, which is the end of February, first part of March in Washington, D.C., with a lot of things that are going on federally. So I'll wait and report most of that in the first part of January. So we'll go to our county manager. Updates for us?
Yep. So I've been having some ongoing discussions with JUB regarding that $2 million that we got. We're the only airport in Nevada to receive that $2 million grant from the FAA. They're going to be here next meeting and go over in detail where we'd like to go with that money. And that will require some matching funds as well. So they're going to present all that to you at our next meeting.
Did they give you a reason why we were the only ones?
You know, they really didn't. I don't know why. I just know we were the ones that received it. I would say because our airport's pretty integral in the air tanker part of it. This has a lot to do with the expansion of a taxiway and thickening it in order to take on the bigger air tankers. So that's probably a majority of the reason. I did attend the Department of Taxation hearing last week, and we were granted our waiver again. They did have some recommendations in the future, what we put into the letter requesting that waiver for the future, and we're going to follow that for future tax waiver requests because we have to do that every year.
Good, that's a win.
Yeah, it's a good deal. So we did meet with BLM last week. We talked about the golf course, and they're fine with us to continue on as usual for this time because of, we have the potential lands bill, which our lands bill is scheduled to be introduced into the House either the end of January, or I'm sorry, the end of December or the 1st of January. Plus, we have the potential ability to purchase the golf course. So we do have that.
The language in the land bill that we can get to mention yet.
Oh, right, yeah. One of the things we did request in the land bill is that if we do purchase it, that we would be reimbursed for the purchase if that happens prior to the land bill going through. So for instance, if we were to buy the golf course for 300,000, we're asking that if it goes through in the land bill, that the county be reimbursed at $300,000, and we'll see what happens. We also met with myself and Kyla, met with JoJo Myers. She's broadband from the governor's office, having to do with the broadband internet within the county. That monkey survey that we had put out about two months ago, they've had some real good responses to that, even to the point where some of the businesses have asked that the county get involved to try to upgrade our service in the county. So we're pretty happy about that. They had a pretty good response from the community as well. So we are working with JoJo Myers and her staff out of governor's office, and she will be here January 23rd to give that whole update to you as well and to see which direction the commissioner would like to go. I do have some things that I'd like to go over, but it has to do with the litigation. So I'm asking after the meeting, you go over a few litigation things. Thank you.
Okay, moving on now, it's time for public comment. For non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or can make comments on any non-agenda item on the board meeting if need, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. In the public comment, Nettie, good morning.
Morning, Nettie.
Morning, Nettie. Hi. This makes me nervous in this situation, but I'm Nettie Quintana, for the record, and I am J&amp;M Materials Testing. And I'm here because I'm tired of getting my name dragged through the mud. I'm tired that one commissioner can dictate the outcome of my livelihood. Recently, I just found out that Judy Allen had a complaint against me, and it's almost laughable. Like, it wouldn't be laughable if it didn't affect me directly. There's lies, it's assumptions. It's ridiculous. And because of that, I've been removed from all projects. It's my understanding that all of you are here to represent the community, and so I'm here to ask you guys to represent me. Somebody can go and say complete lies and come back, and it affects me directly, and it's not even truth, there's no truth to it. So I'm here to ask you guys to represent me. I am as local as it gets. I was born in Battle Mountain, Nevada, Battle Mountain General Hospital, raised here. I represented this community through sports all the way to the USA Today. I have 20 years' experience in materials testing, and this isn't just a handshake job. This is something that takes knowledge, it takes specs and testing and all these little tiny numbers that nobody even understands. That's what I turned into the engineers. That's what gets turned into the state. And if the state doesn't approve it, then you guys don't get to use whatever you're building. My job is very important, and I'm very respected in what I do. I've provided the service for different places. It's from Washington to Arizona to as far as Zereshan, Uzbekistan, and decided to do it here in my hometown to represent us, to save, like, our little pond that we did at the airport, that liner. I made sure that that was good, so we're drinking good water. That's what I do, and I respect my job. I provide this service for Lander County, and I am the only one that does provide this service for Lander County and Humboldt County, actually. I'm requested to be put on the agenda. Not long ago, a couple months ago, I was supposed to be on the agenda, and somehow my name got removed off of it, and so I couldn't come up and speak and explain exactly what I do. And I'd like to take the time to come up here and show you guys exactly what I do as best I can, all the little details that 20 years is really hard to explain, but all these little details that are important with my job and what I do. And it's my livelihood. I'm asking you guys to please step up for me, too. This is ridiculous. I work hard and I do a good job.
Thanks, Nettie.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Nettie.
Any other public comment? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of December 19th, 2000... Oops, excuse me.
Excuse me, Commissioner. We have a time set for item number one, which we're a little bit past. If we could skip...
At 9:10?
Yeah. If we could skip and go right to number one.
We'll open up the consent agenda in a few minutes. Right now, we're going to number one, which is 9:10 public hearing for possible action to approve or disapprove the adoption of ordinance 2019-02, initiating the dissolution of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District, number two, general improvement district, and its Board of Trustees. Okay, hearing is open. I do have a question. In the ordinance, it actually refers to the rates and says that an exhibit could be attached if we're doing certain rates or something. So right now, if the ordinance goes through, we don't have anything solidifying any rates or anything at all.
That's correct.
Right?
That's in the second part, that's the second ordinance, that's the finished ordinance.
The what?
There are two ordinances that's required, the initiating ordinance, and that's what we're asking you to approve today. And then I have to do another ordinance, and it's called finalizing ordinance.
Okay, so the one we do today is just the initiating one?
Yes.
And then we can actually discuss the rates and holding them the same posture?
This is more a due process part.
That's the second one, thank you.
Give all the notices and give them a chance to talk and...
Okay. And with this, then it looks like when we pass this, it goes into the right to appeal up until the 26th of February, is that correct?
They have to make their protest.
Okay.
In writing. It has to be in writing, so everyone knows that. All protests have to be, and the letters written to all the property owners state that, that all protests, if any, must be in writing and must be sent to the Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to entertain a motion if that's your pleasure.
So does this entire thing need to be read in?
No.
No?
When we proposed it, we just read in the title by title, and that's all it needs. And today, you guys can modify, you can reject, or you can adopt.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2019-02 initiating the dissolution of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District, number two, general improvement district, and its Board of Trustees.
I'll second. Can you bring me the motion? Kathy seconded that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we're going to go, we still have another time frame, but that's 9:30, so we're going to go back to the consent agenda.
You have a comment here in Austin?
Austin has a comment. You had a comment?
Well, we'd like to comment.
Yes.
We've already made decisions, so I guess we're a little bit behind the pilot. This is Ray Williams in Austin. And I would really like to comment on it, since you guys are just kind of fresh in the train down the road here. We're more concerned up here as to how the district will be managed once you get rid of the district, how the water system's going to be managed. That's my opinion, Karen. I'm a past employee of the district and a past board member, often on for probably 10 to 15 years, and I know how much work this board has done for the county and how available they were and how they're responsible. We're 90 miles from Battle Mountain, and I just kind of wondered how it'll operate once you get there. I don't know if you've given that any thought or not.
Thank you.
But that was my comment or question, yes.
Thank you, Ray. Actually, yes, there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this on how it's going to be handled, and of course, it will be naturally combined with our water and sewer district. But there's been talk of everything from, of course, holding the rates to an advisory board that could be set up in Austin. And I think our county manager has some comments also. Kate is going to come up for you, too.
So Ray, we've had multiple discussions on the route. We would, several different routes that we would consider taking and then bringing it to the commission for final approval, which would include how we're going to run it. I've talked with Bert quite a bit about it, how it's going to be run, the rates themselves up to and including the advisory board if the commission wants to go that way. So we're not just going to take it over and run it haphazard. We have some thoughts, and we're going to look for some input before we bring it to the commissioners for their final approval. We've had discussions on the current employees, but what we're going to have to do with the employees is they'll have to apply for the positions. They'll be put out to the public, just like we do with any of our other positions, and then there'll be a process to go through for the employees, how we run it. We've talked about possible smart, putting smart meters in. So there's been a lot of discussion on it.
I get just an additional question. You'll probably relate an ordinance similar to what you have to the Battle Mountain Water System.
Yeah, we've talked about the ordinances and the direction to take on the ordinances and how to word those ordinances, and none of that will go into effect until the commission approves it and we get input from the South.
The other question we had, Austin, the district went through a pretty expensive process to expand the boundaries and include areas that weren't being served by the region of district. And I understand that the county doesn't recognize that.
That I don't have an answer for. That's probably one of the things we would need to have further discussion on. I don't know that.
Yes, okay.
Was that it, Ray, for me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I just thought, as long as you involve the community in some of your decisions, we haven't really heard that much about it, Nancy.
Well, we'll definitely look at input from the community before it's brought to the commission for final approval.
We've been accepting information from down south on this issue all along, haven't we?
Yes.
We've been requesting information.
And this is a public hearing set today for that express purpose.
If there's no other comments, then we'll move on back to the consent agenda. And consent agenda will be acted upon as one vote or we can pull them out. And so we just started to read number one, approval of December 19th, 2019, agenda notice. Number two, approval of May 23rd, 2019, meeting minutes. Number three, approval of July 11th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number four, approval of July 25th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number five, approval of October 10th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number six, approval of October 24th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number seven, approval of November 7th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of November 25th, 2019, special meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of September 5th, 2019, meeting minutes. And number 10, the approval of the payment of bills. We do need to pull number three through 10. Three through nine are all meeting minutes we have not received, and the approval of the payment of bills needs to be pulled out. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve number one, the agenda, and number two, this meeting minutes on May 23rd unless someone has some corrections.
So would.
I'll second.
Thank you. Brian made the motion. Kathy seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we go down to the approval of payment of bills. We're going to pull out two bills on that, number 205-853 and 205-954, which is for Commissioner Sparks. And I'd like a motion for the other bills to be paid unless you have any questions.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second.
And Kathy seconded that, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now for bills 205-853 and 205-954.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. I need a second. This is on the two bills that are to Brian's employer, and Kathy made the motion. I do need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Art. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, it's Jane, because I'm making my employer.
Thank you. And there's any opposed? Okay, and that passes. I think we aren't ready for number two, and number three is going to be a little bit longer, so I'm going to move to number four. Commissioners, for possible action to approve or disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Board of Lander County Planning Commission, which currently has two openings, four-year terms, term ending June 30th, 2020, and to consider all of the following applicants to include... Just Kathy one, Jerry Anis.
Commissioners, this has been advertised properly multiple times, and this gentleman has put in his letter, as you see in your book, and that's all we have so far, so we continue to advertise.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Jerry Anis for the appointment to serve on the Board of Lander County Planning Commission, which currently, which has a four-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Brian seconded that. Any other discussion? And we thank Jerry for stepping up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to number five. Under Commissioners, for possible action to approve or disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Board of Lander County Equalization, which currently has one opening, four-year terms, term is ending June 30th, 2020, and to consider all of the following applicants to include, and this would be Marla J. Sam.
Once again, this was advertised properly, and Marla Sam has put in her letter of interest.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of Marla Sam to serve on the Lander County Board of Equalization, which is a four-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Brian seconded that. I think she's served on that before, I believe, in...
Yeah.
So we again thank her for stepping back up. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that one passes. It looks like the others are just a little bit lengthy, so I'm going to ask we go off the record and just take a quick four-minute break. Okay, with that, we are calling our commission meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone. We are on agenda item number two. 9:30 a.m., public hearing for possible action to approve or disapprove the adoption of ordinance 2019-01, amending Title 15, Chapter 12 of the Lander County Code of Repeal and Amendment to adopt the 2018 Building Codes and provide simpler updating thereof, and approve the chair or vice chair to sign. Ms. Anna?
Anna Panola with the Building Department?
Morning, ma'am.
Good morning, guys.
So, okay, we have done everything properly, and we are ready now to approve this, is that correct? Does anybody have any questions at all, Anna? Okay, and it looks like we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the adoption of the ordinance 2019-01, amending Title 15, Chapter 12, for the Lander County Code by repeal and amendment to adopt the 2018 Building Codes and to provide simpler updating thereof, and approve the chair or vice chair to sign.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Brian seconded that. Any other discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much, guys.
There you go.
Thank you.
Been a long time, but we're on top of it now. Okay, number three. Commissioners, updating information regarding future planning, historical destination of the old courthouse, nonprofit status, and budgetary items for Lander County citizens for historic preservation presented by Colt and Amy Nelson.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
For the record, Colt Nelson.
Amy Nelson.
Thank you. We're glad you could join us this morning. We've been a bit inquisitive. I know you've been busy, so you can bring us up to date.
Okay, I'm not sure, I believe we turned in Lander County citizens for historic preservation for you guys, so that's with you now. It's a little bit about our why and our what. I don't know if you want me to go through that real quick or get right to how we're going to continue on with the...
You know, you can do that either way. You could just highlight some of the things that you want us to know.
Okay.
And then what you would like us to do, and go from there.
Okay, sounds good. Well, the LCC HP's long acronym for Lander County Citizens for Historic Preservation. Our mission is to support restoration efforts in Battle Mountain, and we've really just got going with one building at this time, Frederick Joseph DeLongchamp's building, our old county building, courthouse. And we really want to look at the value and beauty of a lot of the historical... of a lot of the historical areas in Battle Mountain and approach that similar to what Austin has done, I would say, and take some pride in the community of preserving some of these things. So that's a little bit of the why, and preferably get people to actually utilize these places for community things that we can all enjoy. And the what is really coordinate our efforts to restore and make these buildings where we can use them and keep them into our, maybe for another century, right? Yeah, we could still enjoy the courthouse a century from now. Lots of meaning with the building, lots of folks have a lot of memories with it, including generations, for me in particular, several generations. Some of them even went to the schools, young kids. So a very neat thing that I think we're doing, and it's been a struggle because, you know, when you kind of do it part-time, you move along and you kind of inch along, and this has been something that I've questioned whether or not we should have taken it on, but we're still here, we still want to do it, and we have got a little bit more traction, which gets us a little bit more to the, how are we going to do things? And we got a list of what we've actually accomplished as of today. So we did contract with the Nevada Preservation Foundation and worked to get the Grammar School Courthouse on the Nevada State Register of Historical Places, so that's something to really celebrate.
Sure. So everything's in here, so I thought maybe you guys can look through it as we're...
To Kenny.
And... It really, it bears repeating, it's so, it was one of the biggest steps we had in our step of events we wanted to accomplish, to at least get that done. Like most things, there was a little bit more work involved with it and a little bit more time to take that process through. But during that, we developed some really good relationships with regional personnel that were involved with getting that done that will help us in the future with some, not only with this building, of course, but others that we could preserve. And those folks were Jim Bertolini, Heidi Swank, Catherine Wines, and Rebecca Palmer, all helped us to get this done. We did, unfortunately, have to terminate a relationship with the attorney we were using to get our 501(c)(3) done, does that, did I say that right? (inaudible). C3 done?
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit. We needed that to carry on for all the grants that we were excited to go after, and we know which ones we want to go after, but that just came to a complete, where it just, nothing was getting done. So we've terminated that and actually rehired another attorney, and they're going to, they're working on it pretty fast, so they know that we were under a time crunch because we lost about a year, year and a half there. We do meet, we've had one meeting just recently, and we're developing next steps, including plans for an open house during the 150-year anniversary Battle Mountain celebration. We want to get to a point where we can clean up the building enough and have people be able to walk through safely and kind of get their vision, some ideas. We have some that we're going to present there and that we could do, like maybe a couple rooms or like the old grammar school that it used to be, where you could walk through and see it, and community relation building, basically, that we could utilize. Maybe the new Chamber of Commerce, I don't know, but whatever, right? It's just thoughts, because it's a beautiful building that... To get those ideas, once, and once we receive that nonprofit, we really want to develop those capital campaigns to make some money for, it's not all on Lander County, but to get the grants to preserve it and do the right things for the building. And as of right now, Lander County blessed us with providing $50,000 for seed money to get at least what we got done, completed. And at this point, we basically, the cost to NPF to be designated on the Nevada State Registry was $15,000, plus $250,000 to belong to the National Trust for Historical Preservation, and the initial payment to our attorney was $417,000. So you can see there on the back, we, and you have all those financial statements in the book there for you guys to go through, but it's all in there. So right now, we're sitting at $34,269.84. Oh, and we have $62 to order checks. I think that was the total, so that's where we're at. I think, I think we're going to really get some traction with the 501(c)(3), and we have some really good people that we've met that's going to help us with a lot of this that we would, we didn't have before the last time we met with you. So I'm more confident we can keep this going. We just got to keep steadfast with it, you know, and get that 501(c)(3) done. Do you have anything to add there, Amy?
Nope. Nailed it.
And I think it's hard when you're starting off on a new project that you've never done before of saving a building. It's those, those things are not easy. And so it's, I think when you jumped off, you go, oh, what did I just do? Type thing. So, but one of the things I thought, when there, since you guys are, since they're having the all-school reunion, you guys might consider doing a GoFundMe page and hand out flyers at that reunion, because you're going to have everybody, you know, lots of people that are still around that probably went to that school. So you might try doing that as far as raising some funds for it as well. And from someone who loves to Boston, you go back there and you look at those beauti... And I know it's night and day, but it doesn't, preservation's preservation. And, you know, the buildings that they save and they preserve, they're absolutely beautiful, and it's worth saving, you know, those type of buildings. So kudos to you guys, and I do respect how hard it is to been there, done that, to jump in and try to get something done like that, so nice job, and thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and thanks for stepping up and taking it on.
I just want to, I just want to mention a little bit of history about this. When I started four years ago, there were two schools of thought. One school of thought was knock the courthouse down, haul it away, and fill it in. The other was, and we saw it at the town hall meeting, we had people in tears. So I formulated the committee to get this going, and I don't know where the people who originally started it are now, but with you two mover and shakers, maybe we can get something done.
And reach back out.
From a legal standpoint, I'd just comment that you would be amazed at how many doors will open for you once you establish the 501(c)(3).
That's what we've heard.
That is, that should be your primary focus, because Nevada law is set up to accommodate 501(c)(3).
Yeah. I appreciate that, thank you.
And then you stay on your person.
Yeah, we both work 60-hour jobs. So it's just, so we felt like, gosh, are we even the right people to do this? But, you know, as long as you guys are patient, we're going to...
And it wasn't...
Some touch.
My concern was we had some vandalism within the building.
Yeah.
And, you know, do we need to put a fence around it with a gate to protect it? Or do we just let it go the way it is? That was my biggest concern.
Yeah, security is...
And if we're going to, if we're going to put millions of dollars into that building to bring it back, you know, do we, do we need a fence? I mean, that was just a concern after I walked around in there, after I, you know, after the vandalism took place. And I don't want to see the windows get broken because they're that old glass.
Yes.
So if you guys can come up with a plan to...
Security.
To help some security issues there, bring it back, and we'll get going on it.
Awesome.
Thank you, we sincerely appreciate the update and the chapter book.
Oh, thank you.
Amy, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And the people working on it.
Good bet, sure. Well, we'll have more news to share with you once we get that 501(c)(3), I think things will move faster. Thanks, Ray.
All right, well, it's fine and moving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item would be number six. Under Assessors, for possible action to approve or disapprove the modified aerial photography contract with pictometry and approve the chair or vice chair to sign. Is Laura here?
Let me go check her out.
So my understanding is after going through all of this again, it's the amendment, the modification, right?
I think, I believe so.
And they're upgrading it, and so Laura's the only one that really knows...
Yes.
What's going on and where we are.
Supposed to change between $50,000, so...
Yes. It's significant, absolutely.
She's on her way right now.
Thank you.
Morning, Laura.
Good morning.
We have gone through this and taken a look at it with the, with the upgrade and the amendment and such, but only you can explain what we're actually doing on that upgrade and why the additional amount.
Laura Duval, Lander County Assessor. We didn't realize that the original contract had the wrong imagery resolution. It had a six-inch, which doesn't have near the clarity or the precision as the three-inch. We use pictometry daily in our reappraisal process because a lot of times we can't get into properties, gates are locked, people aren't home. We're able to actually measure structures, concrete, pavement, buildings with our pictometry. And in order to do so, we need the three-inch resolution. So the difference in the price is just changing it from a six-inch resolution to a three-inch, and that's what we wanted in the beginning. I didn't catch that on the first go-around when we did the first contract. So the modification is for our flyover, and actually, our flyover was supposed to be this year, but because of weather conditions early in the spring, it's been bumped up to the spring of 2020, after the snow is off the mountains and off the trees, and that's always iffy, as you know, in our neck of the woods. So the difference is just a modification. I had actually budgeted more than enough to cover this. As you can see, I budgeted $550,000, but the total's only going to come to $408,000. So what I'm asking you to approve is just the modification in the fees. This is out of my technology fund, and then to sign the modified agreement with pictometry.
And how often do we, do we update this? Every two years, we pay that?
Um, we're on a, on a schedule, yeah, every couple of years is where we're at. That's what we've been doing. It's been a, actually, our last flyover was 16, so it'll end up being four years, once we do the flyover in, in the spring of 2020. Sometimes we'll do just small little areas, and we have a program through pictometry called Change Finder. So what it does is it, it takes the last flyover and then the next flyover, and it matches the two imageries together, and it detects just properties that have changes. And in fact, in the larger counties, that's all they do, is they do a Change Finder program where they only visit properties that physically have any kind of changes, and it saves a lot of time, money, staffing requirements and everything. So it is a very useful tool. And so we just started using that. We will be going to Phoenix in the spring for more, for a week-long training on advanced skills with the pictometry. But I'll tell you why it's been a lifesaver in many situations. We, with ranches, a lot of properties anymore, you know, it's hard to get in. And so we've been able to measure, because it has really good measuring tools, and the accuracy is very good, so it has been a very resourceful tool. So, yeah, probably our next one would be, after 2020, would be a couple years after that. It just depends on, because we're not doing the whole county. This is, this is all Battle Mountain Town, the surrounding hilltop areas and stuff where our populated growth is. So the next year, we might do another one down in the south because it's a much smaller area, it's a much smaller amount. I just have to look at the schedule and see where we're at on that, okay?
Just a quick clarification, because we approved this actually in March.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So have they been doing the six-inch, and we're finding, no, we're going to redo it to three, or...
No, no. Like I said, we didn't do the flyover yet. It got rescheduled to the spring of 2020, so...
Okay, so we haven't paid them anything.
No, we've, no, we haven't, no, it's all budgeted.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Good. Well, I just wondered if we'd wasted something between March and now.
No, 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 no. No, no.
Great, thank you.
No, it's just got rescheduled because we realized...
You realized it was the Ryan digital.
Yeah, yeah.
So this covers the entire county or just the northern part of the county?
Um, it's, I, let's see, our flight schedule, I think there's a copy of it on here. It covers a pretty big area.
So...
This is, this kind of shows you, it's all of this here. We've got some stuff down in here over, you know, on the Crescent Valley side where the mining sites are and stuff. So it's a, it's not the whole county, but it's a very large chunk of it, yes. And I think you have that, don't you? It's on the back of the actual amended contract that you guys are going to sign.
We do have it.
Well, somebody has that.
No, we've got it, it's just a little hard to read.
I'm ready, I was wondering if you have any other questions? I'll make the motion to approve the modified aerial photography contract with pictometry and to approve the chair or vice chair to sign.
Thank you, Kathy made the motion, and Brian seconded that. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you, and that passes. Thank you, Laura. We're on number seven. University of Nevada Reno Extension, Lander County, for possible action to approve or disapprove the budget carryover or spend-down plan as presented by Holly Gatsky of the University of Nevada Reno Extension. Did she want us to call her if we had questions, or does she want to be on, or...
This proposed agreement was put forth by, by Ms. Gatsky. There's some things in there that are, I think we ought to look at a little harder as far as maybe a 30-day out or a 60-day out. And if the commission is in favor of making a policy, myself and the DA can get with Ms. Gatsky and actually come up with a policy. But this is just an agreement for now.
Hello, Lander County Commission.
Hey, there.
Hi, Holly.
Hi, Holly, we just read it into the minutes here, and you are on. We're just looking, we also have a letter from Dr. Lyles, and so we're kind of reviewing that one, too. I think that was, yeah, I was going to say, that was part of it. I knew I saw that before. Okay, so the question is whether we do their mandatory minimum of $90,000 or what. And of course, naturally, this, this fund is funded by the ad valorem, what we charge, the .015 to all of our citizens on our taxes. So it's been accumulating because we haven't had, naturally, an educator for the last year. But the other thing is, we actually moved Shannon over into our admin office, and some of her cost now has been picked up by us rather than... So, so their amount that we have is, is their total fund balance, $250,900. So the question is, how much you want to move on over? I do know they, they needed, what, they were looking at a new vehicle and stuff, where we finally get our educator, and we'll be interviewing on that real soon. So hopefully, that will be very soon in the next few months of the new year. And Keith?
Yes.
Yes, so we, actually, the updated balance, ending fund balance And their, their Board of Regents has, has asked a 10% carryover, but we are looking at, or Ms. Gatsky is requesting a $90,000 carryover, which is equivalent to about one year of operating funds. So, like I say, the Board of Regents is asking for the 10%. They're asking for a one-year, which is approximately $90,000, with the updated fund balance at $282,585.11.
So approximately three years operating expense is what they have in it, right?
Yes, that is correct. And that's due to the fact that there hasn't been an educator there for quite a while, or in part.
So since we are collecting this under the auspice of the egg, that's what our citizens are being charged for, we've got this. If we decided to just take part of this, what, what happens? Let's just say we took $200,000. What happens to the other $82,000? Does it go in our general fund balance?
No, it'll stay with them, with the university. It's, it's their discretion on how they spend it. It's their money to spend.
Okay, so if it's their money on the whole $282,000, which we thought, what's the point of keeping $90,000? I guess I don't, I don't understand that.
That would be a one-year carryover for them to continue with their operations.
In addition to the $282,000?
No, we would...
No, no.
We would take that back.
Yes, we would, we would hold that, and that would be a rollover, an annual rollover of the $90,000 if it's approved. And then they could use the rest of it for a new vehicle, for additional extension programs. And I'm not speaking for the university, like, for instance, the bootstraps program, something like that.
They're basically asking for a 30% carryover, approximately 30%.
Close to the 10%. Close to the ten percent, if you dare.
That's bottom line.
I, I guess I'm confused. So what if we just carried over the whole amount? What difference would that make? It's still theirs.
I, I would ask Holly that.
Holly?
Okay, yes. I, I can tell you, I'm struggling to hear you, but I think I caught most of that. So the, the thing is, is traditionally, we just carried over the whole amount. But with this agreement with the NCH, they're saying that the most you can carry over is ten percent, and that is very unnerving. That means we've got to spend it out every year. In cases like in the last couple, you know, the last year where we don't have an extension educator, you may be spending that money frivolously, and we don't want to go there. We'd rather have the money ready for programming for the new person to come in. The other thing is, is that it's risky to only have ten percent, because, you know, that's what, uh, nine thousand dollars carry over instead of ninety. And if, if, you know, in the boom bust years, if the mining decreases, your tax income goes down dramatically. It means we'd have to be cutting staff and changing over programming, whereas if we have ninety thousand there, it helps us to kind of upoffer those troubled years. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it does. But my, my main question on it is, if we roll over the whole amount, because it is your money, basically. We've collected it for you.
Right.
If we roll over the whole amount, what, what does that have to do with the ninety thousand? I mean, can you, can you exercise your whole amount? What, what are we voting on the ninety thousand for then?
What, what it means is that, instead of us rolling over the, you'd roll over the whole amount, but this document means that you have an agreement, and we would consider this a partnership. You know, we want programming that works for you, and that's why we're bringing this forward. So the thing is, is that means that you would be agreeing that when it becomes more, that we have five years to use up those extra funds that show up, and we use it for programming in extension, which shouldn't be shocking, that's exactly where it should go. But we've got five years of leeway to deal with extras on these years where we do end up with more.
So do we, do we even, do we need to set a policy, or can we just look at it on a year-to-year basis?
Um, I think the problem is, is that we need something in agreement that it isn't the ten percent, something that you're comfortable with.
How?
So you could state that you would like to discuss how to do with the carryover on a year-to-year basis. That could be your agreement that is different than the ten percent that NCH has as a, as a set thing. But I, I am putting this before you, because I think you, the Lander County Commission, should have somewhat of a say, other than it just being a standard ten percent.
So in the past, what it's been used for was the, part of it's been used for the educator extension salary, and for programs, and for vehicles and so forth. The program's pretty much been, been dead for over a year, I believe.
A year, yes.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just been sitting there accumulating on a monthly basis. So that's why they're, they're asking for this. It gives them the ability to spend their money, but we're going to keep ninety thousand in a reserve, I guess you could call it.
Okay, so you want a motion that, that the ninety thousand, we will recognize the ninety thousand, maintain reserve balance of that, and the balance will be carried over for this year?
Yes.
For next year?
For, for next...
Does that sound right? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And if the balance beyond the ninety gets, we have five years to do some planning and bring it for you on how it's going to be spent.
I thought I had asked for some numbers to see, to see what your operating was, so I seen that. That's not in the pack, so. But there, you're saying the ninety thousand is about one year's operating expense for them?
Yes.
Correct, correct. On, on average, that's about one year's operating.
We, we haven't had anybody in there, so we haven't had any expenses, except for Shannon.
So, but we, I can certainly give you past years of, of what it was.
If you say it's ninety thousand?
Yeah.
Wait, do you want to have a policy, or you just want to review this every year? I, I would review it every year.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at a motion to maintain the reserve balance in the Lander County Extension Fund of ninety thousand, and the balance to be carried over for next year.
And, and reviewed annually by the Board of Commissioners.
Sure.
We, and we can add that language if you feel about it.
Okay.
I'm so moved. Come on, Kathy, you can do this.
I can't remember all, all of what you said, so. Brian wants to reiterate that.
Here, take it from here.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to maintain the reserve balance of the Lander County Extension Fund of ninety thousand, and utilize the remaining funds towards the extension programming efforts for the community deployment for the next five years.
We'll review it.
And to be reviewed annually.
I'll second that.
Okay, Kathy made the motion, Brian seconded that. Do we, do we have that clear enough, Holly?
Yes, yeah, that sounds wonderful. Sounds great.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you all, too, and thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
We're at number nine. Oh, I'm sorry, eight. We're still in the University of Nevada Reno Extension, Lander County, for possible action to approve or disapprove of the proclamation two thousand nineteen dash O three to declare January as our National Radon Action Month, and approve the Chair or Vice Chair to sign, which we have done every year. And I think Shannon is before us this morning to bring us up to date on that one again.
Good morning, Shannon Burman, Executive Secretary. Yes, I was just, I put this forth so that we can do this. We've been doing it the last few years, to have a proclamation to declare January National Radon Action Month. We will be giving out test kits, again, free for January and February. So we encourage everyone to, to obtain a test if they haven't tested. There may be a cut in the grant funding for twenty twenty-one, that they will only be able to give the free tests for a portion of January. So utilizing it this year would be ideal for everyone. And again, just reiterating the importance of finding out if there is radon in homes and buildings for the lung cancer health reasons.
Thank you. We, we always appreciate it. And of course, part of that, where the radon, if you look at some of the maps, is really heavy in the south, too. So we really, really push that for people to be testing. We do need the proclamation read in, though, the whole thing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation two thousand nineteen O three to declare January as a National Radon Action Month, and approve the Chair and Vice Chair to sign, and I'll read the proclamation and direct it. National Radon Action Month, January twenty twenty. Whereas many Lander County residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas, is primary, that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers, and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates twenty-one thousand people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, and lung, and bronchus cancer, bronchus cancer kills more people in a year than any other cancer. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Lander County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four pickle cherries per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smokers, as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive. And when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas, University of Nevada Reno Extension, Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the EPA support efforts to encourage all Lander County residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Therefore, the Lander County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty as National Radon Action Month in Lander County.
I'm second. Thank you. So we moved to second for the adoption of the National Radon Action Month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, and that passes. And thank you so much for bringing it forward so timely.
Yes, thank you.
When did we declare it last month? We, we declared it late.
Hospice?
Hospice?
I think so.
Okay. That was National Hospice Month?
Yes.
Because I went to Walmart later that day, and they had a completely different cause for the month. I was just wondering if we were off track.
No, there's lots, there's lots of months. I'm, every month, there are a lot of different things that they bring forward. But the only thing brought forward to us last time was the hospice that we thought was a little bit late, where I just thought this one was really timely, because Shannon can get, start advertising early. So we're okay. Okay, we are at number nine. Accounting Manager. Discussion and information regarding a financial update and direction for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget, presented by Cindy Benson, Lander County Fiscal Officer.
Morning, Cindy.
Good morning, Cindy.
Cindy Benson, Fiscal Officer. Sorry, I got probably messed up. I just wanted to give you an update that we received FAA grant money for the Battle Mountain Airport for fiscal year nineteen twenty. We received fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and twelve cents for the reconstruction apron design. And we received for the Austin Airport, fiscal year nineteen twenty, forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for the rehabilitate access rate. And I believe you have a memo from Laura, where she granted one hundred thousand dollars to the general fund from her technology fund. And then, other than that, I would just like to ask, what direction would you like to go with twenty twenty-one budget?
Spend less money.
Okay.
I think, in the previous years, we've always had the budgets do, what, first part of February?
Yes.
And so I don't see any reason to be changing that. I think we should keep on track. It seemed to work fairly well, to make sure we have everything done, and done in a proper timeframe.
Is there anything that you guys would like to do differently, budget-wise? Or pretty much just keep it the same?
I think it worked well last year.
As long as everything we did was in compliance, I think that we just can continue on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. We are on number ten. Under the County Manager, for possible action to accept or deny the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen audit report, after a slide show presentation by the CPA Chad B. Atkinson of Hinton Berdick CPAs and Advisors. And you're on, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you very much. Is it okay if I stand here?
Absolutely.
Chad Atkinson from Hinton Berdick.
Just a minute. We might want to turn that phone around just a little bit, so maybe you can put it up on top. Maybe that will help pick up, so Austin can hear a little bit better. Thank you.
I will try to speak as though I'm speaking to my children. No, 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 I won't do that, so that everybody can hear. It's nice to be with you today. Merry Christmas to everybody. We're here to discuss the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen audit. And I prepared a slide, show presentation, and I'll proceed through that. I encourage you to ask any questions that you may have. Due to the nature of the setting and the slides that I prepared, most of my comments will be kind of at a higher level. And so if you have any questions or want to dig into some of the details, we're happy to do that probably later on, or you can send me a follow-up question, things like that. Happy to do that for you. But we'll probably just keep it at a high level today, so. Okay, so first, first of all, I want to say thank you to the county staff for helping us get through the audits. Audits are disruptive, and we, we ask for a lot of information, and we appreciate the good working relationship we have with the county and all of the people here. We try to be as friendly as we can as auditors, and that's been reciprocated by the county. So we appreciate working with the county staff, wanted to say thank you to them. We wanted to also say thank you to the contract accountants, Kettington and Christensen, who came in to assist the county in the software transition that's taking place. So I, I would say that, given the circumstances with transitioning systems, the audit went really pretty smoothly for fiscal year nineteen. And we attribute that to the county staff working hard, of course, and then Kettington and Christensen assisting. So we're pleased with the, the flow of how it went. And we started a little bit later on the audit this year, and we were actually able to get it done on time, so we're happy about that. Couple of things that you might want to read in the report are the letter of transmittal and the management's discussion and analysis. Those are, are written by management. And so if you have time, that's, those things should give you kind of a sense of the major things that occurred during fiscal year two thousand nineteen. If you don't get a chance to read the, the entire document, take a look at those two things. So I'm going to cover reports first today. So the independent auditors' reports on page one in your financial statements. And we issued an unmodified opinion, or clean opinion, on the financial statements, so there were no problems or issues there. The next report that we issue is on page one twenty-nine in your financial statements. That's the report on internal controls over financial reporting on compliance. I've given you kind of a summary of what we have there. We had some prior year audit findings that were cleared, so I, we had two that were cleared. In the ranking of audit findings, there's, there's material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and then other, kind of other matters or control deficiencies. The county had a material weakness finding in, in previous audits that was resolved during two thousand and nineteen. So that's good news. That's one of the ones that was cleared. We had two that were reissued for, from previous years, and then we had three new audit findings that were kind of at the medium level. They were not the material weaknesses, but they were significant deficiencies, kind of in the middle. So I'll cover those in, in my next couple of slides, but that, that was the outcome for internal controls. Then we also do a report on compliance with the NRS, and that's on page one thirty-one. If you were to read that report in its entirety, you would find that there were some prior year audit findings that were cleared, two that were cleared, and then one that was reissued. And I'm happy to report that there were no additional current year audit findings related to the NRS. So that's, that's good news there. So next report that we do, the county had major, well, had significant federal funds received during fiscal year two thousand nineteen related to the airport. And so we had to do additional test work called a single audit, where we review the expenditures there. And I'm happy to report, and on page one thirty-seven, you can find this report, that there were no current year audit findings related to that major program that we looked at, and there were no prior year audit findings to resolve. So no problems or issues there. Okay, so then findings and recommendations, I'm going to go over these. I think the commission's had, in your packet, you should have had the full financial statements, including the findings, so you've had a chance to maybe look those over. I'm going to just give you a brief, brief summary of each one, and kind of some, some of the keys there. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but. So two thousand nineteen zero zero one was titled Water Revenues and Collections. There were some, some internal control issues related to how collection of some of the older accounts receivable for water billings were being handled. So we, we identified some issues there, and wrote those up in our, in our findings and recommendations to be addressed. I think they've already been addressed in fiscal year twenty. Yeah, he's nodding his head. And also, I think there's been a corrective action plan that was included in your packet, too. So I think that, that issue's been tackled. Any questions on that one? Okay, two thousand nineteen zero zero two, the compensated absence payout, payout policy. There were some compensated absences payouts during fiscal year two thousand nineteen that we went through and audited and looked at. And we didn't have any problems or issues with that. But as we were going through, we did, we did notice maybe some clarity that may be needed in the policies for the county related to those payouts. And so that's kind of what the finding is pointing to, is just to clarify who should receive payouts, and when, and, and all of those things should be clarified in the policy. and all of those things should be clarified in the policies. So were there any questions on that one?
Can you be a little bit more specific on that issue?
Of, of what we found or what we're?
Yes, of what you found.
Okay, so we had a couple of, I should have, I should have wrote, you know, wrote those down beforehand. But we had a, I think a couple of department heads that were paid out during fiscal year two thousand nineteen. And we, when we went through, we found commission approvals for those and things like that. So there weren't any issues with that. However, when the county staff is trying to administer that policy, if it's not clear in there who should receive them and who shouldn't, and when they should receive them and how much, then it becomes a little bit tricky. So we're encouraging the commission to clarify your policy.
So you said they had commission approval. Was that inside of the meeting or outside of the meeting?
I think that the approvals were, I think some of them were in the meeting and some were additional information that was given to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Maybe you could clarify a little bit of.
Yeah, yeah, this has to do with when a department head goes or elected department head goes over on their vacation. And then there, it becomes a payout issue because we're capped at two forty. And we are working to clear up that policy, make it much clearer to the commission. But when, when a, when a department head goes over the two hundred and forty hours, it becomes a payout.
So explain that to me, if you, when you say go over on your vacation, you've taken more than you are incurred?
No, you've incurred, you've incurred more, accrued more than you're supposed to have per policy.
So then it has to be paid back to that person?
It's paid out, so for instance, a, a.
To the person though?
Yes, so somebody has two hundred and eighty hours, so they're over forty hours, and it's done quarterly. And it's, it's in concurrence with our current policy. It's just the clarification of who is allowed or who should get those payouts. And what we do is we leave it up to the elected official or the department head. If that person can't use vacation, then they get a memo or a discussion takes place with payroll at every quarter and, and that is paid out at that time. So if they have forty hours over, they get a forty hour payout based on their hourly salary.
Would they lose it?
Or, or, or they lose it. In some cases, they do lose it.
Or they're made to take, or they're made to take it, that's correct.
So basically, your findings is our policy's very big in that area.
Yeah, it's hard to administer, so I, the main word there is clarity. If you could bring clarity to the policy so that it's easy for the staff to administer. We felt like we got substantial documentation for those payouts that occurred, so we didn't see any issues with that. But we, we felt like there's a control issue there that could be looked at. Good questions, thank you. All right, so next one, two thousand nineteen zero zero three, credit card internal controls. We, we found some instances as we went through and looked at credit card internal controls where we needed to have the proper level of review for the credit card transactions. In some cases, there was a subordinate reviewing the credit card transactions for somebody over them. And so we just needed to kind of realign those approvals and reviews to the proper level.
Authorities.
Authorities, so that it's either, you know, cross-functional, somebody with equal authority or somebody over with greater authority reviewing those things. So that's the main thing that we pointed to there.
And that's been changed also, right?
Well, we're working on that change to put it in writing, to bring it to the board, yes. But we're, we're aware of it. I've had several discussions with Chad about it and.
And how, how soon are we going to be able to see that?
It should be by next month, by January, yep.
I think also in that credit card internal control, I think we found some instances where the documentation wasn't as good as it could have been, explaining like the purpose for the expenditure and some of the receipts and stuff like that. I think that was kind of written up in the finding that the county can continue to work on that. It wasn't widespread, but there were some issues where we were wondering about the purpose and the documentation was there. So be, be good at your documentation.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a question. It should be very clear-cut.
Yeah.
The words, the things spent, so.
So I think that was the other component to that finding.
So on that finding, just to, so my two cents, I have huge issue with that. That this day and age, everybody knows they're supposed to turn in every, all of their receipts. And there should be no incidents where they aren't. You, you purchase something, you get, you go to a hotel, you do whatever, you get a receipt. You get an envelope, you put it in and you turn it in, and you have the proper documentation.
So, so I, I will let you know what, what I've been doing with, with credit card statements that come in without documentation. If they can't provide it to me, the individual is requesting to pay out of their pocket.
And is that something that we can bring forward as a policy, that if you don't have your documentation?
Yes, that, that, yes.
And I would like to see that. If you don't turn in your documentation when that credit card comes in, then you're going to be responsible for that.
Wonderful, yes, I'm going to try to.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Isn't your credit card statement your receipt?
Yes and no. Sometimes you can tell what's being purchased there, sometimes you cannot. And usually a receipt will give you a detail, a little more detail of what that is. For instance, you may, you may be able to see the vendor and kind of, you know, what it is, but it doesn't give you the detail of what was.
Or what was actually purchased.
So the receipts are necessary, yeah.
Well, if you go to a gas station, you're probably going to purchase fuel.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, if you go to a hardware store and it says hardware store, and then you get the receipt, oh, they bought some guns. Why'd you buy some guns for?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, I, I see your point. That's why the receipts are necessary.
You gotta have the receipts. And I, I'm held to the same, just so you know, in our firm, same thing. I, I tried to argue that point at my firm, but they said, no, you gotta have the whole, whole receipt so we can see what's there, so. Okay, so bank reconciliation timeliness, two thousand seventeen zero zero five. I think this one is, we're looking at the rearview mirror on this one. I think there was a period during fiscal year two thousand nineteen where the bank reconciliations weren't being done timely. And that was the first half of the fiscal year, and then the second half of the fiscal year, I think that got a lot better. And there was also a software transition going on. So this, this finding is just reporting to you that, that the bank reconciliations were not timely in the first half of the fiscal year.
You know, it's an interesting point on that because when we were looking back and, and we would, we would actually bring in our treasurer and say, you know, what, what's going on and apparently you haven't been reconciling things to us properly. And we did, we, we brought them in before the commission. And we're promised absolutely it would be done and this would happen.
Could I ask you to make a point that it was our past treasurer, it's not our current treasurer?
No, not current, no. I, didn't I say two thousand eighteen?
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, because I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen.
So I'm saying, we, we brought them before us, okay? And yes, we, we knew there was a problem and we kept bringing them in and they were promising this would take place. And then we assumed it was done and it never came back to us for months and months. So we're saying, what do we put in that policy to say, somebody better be on top of this if it's not done?
Well, if it's a, if it's a board and you decide as a board that we won't follow up on it, that's where our county manager makes sure that gets put on the next agenda.
Well, we hope so, because we're dealing with an elected official, and at this point it was an appointed official to an elected position. But are we saying, even the employees that were there that knew all about the problem and nothing was brought forth to us individually? So we look back and say, this was a horrible time. And we thought we were on top of it and it kept bringing it up, and yet nothing was being done. So I'm going, where does the buck stop? I mean, it really stops here, but nobody was telling us.
That's pretty common, isn't it? Employees not telling us things that are going on?
Well, we do have a whistle, we have a whistleblower.
But that's what we have auditors for, because they're going to catch that.
But they don't catch it till.
Yeah, we're a little bit sooner than you'd like, probably, yeah.
Hindsight's twenty-twenty, that's what we're running on. We have to let it happen until we find out, and that's always a problem. If we know about it, we can intervene.
What I would do, just as a recommendation.
Yeah, what can we do so it won't happen again?
Probably I would have that, when you approve bills to pay, right? That should be an agenda item that I think would be complimentary to that included. Every month, you should have a reconciliation to look at. I don't think it's unrealistic to have it done every month.
Thank you.
So.
It's an important part of the, the price of financial controls, so.
Right, and in the past, there, there have been reconciliations submitted to you, to the commission regularly, monthly or even bi-monthly. With new system, it's, they're working on trying to get that in place. So it, it will come back. Where we used to get that printout, that green printout. Once we get the new system in place, that'll stop. It, it, it has stopped for, for a while now because of the new.
How long are we looking before?
Yeah, let's run away on that, Ustie.
Our accountants will be here the week of the sixth of January and we'll start it.
And for the record, that was our treasurer, Ustie.
Thank you. So yes, I, I would allow for some, some transition between the two systems. And then once you get that first reconciliation done, then it's, should be kind of monthly routine you go through, so.
We just want to be sure we're not in that same situation ever again.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, two thousand sixteen zero zero three is a finding that we're holding over. And I think it's just kind of an ongoing risk of what we call segregation of duties in small departments. Due to the nature and size of some departments, there's only a few people handling funds. And it can put them in a situation where fraud or errors could occur. And so this finding is just pointing out a couple of areas of the county that are at risk that you need to monitor and try to put in controls in place so that you can not have any fraud or errors occur within the county's funds.
So those are in, is it largely in activities where we receive cash?
Yeah, I think that's where your risk is.
What, I mean, honestly, what if we went to a all-credit debit card base? I mean, that's what mostly people pay nowadays, right?
And, and we have talked about that, Commissioner. Our biggest, one of our bigger issues is, is the landfill of where it's at. So we've talked about getting a, a hotspot out there in order for credit card or debit cards to be taken as well as an invoicing system. So that we don't, that, that the gatekeeper out there isn't tasked with, with collecting cash.
Right.
The golf course is another one, and we, we've got some things in place for, for the next vendor at the golf course that will be included in their contract for them to do on a, on a weekly or even a daily basis.
You know, my only concern about paying with a credit card out at the landfill is, you know, you go there and you pay four or five dollars. Nobody's going to want to use a card for that because then you have a fee on top of it, so.
Yeah, and that, that was brought up. That's why we, what we talked about doing an invoicing system.
Absolutely.
Or, or something along those lines. Where we can eliminate, as, as much as we can eliminate the cash flow at, at those two places.
I have a question for the auditor. Is there a way to monitor loss, physical loss through the audit? You know, things that have been stolen or disappeared or whatever?
That's a pretty, that's a large question. Are you talking about cash receipt fraud?
Well, I'm talking about something that was bought with an invoice, but later was misplaced or stolen or something.
Inventory, that would be an inventory issue. You'd have to have an inventory system.
We just started an inventory list about two years ago. There was none before.
Yeah, that's, that's a, has to do with, the only way to monitor that would be internally within the county's processes and systems. So I would suppose that some counties have maybe used technology like cameras and things like that. But largely, it's going to be, what's my inventory system and how do I double check on that?
And that's a, that's a, that's a good idea, Art, but man, that's a big task.
So, so I, I just want to clarify, Commissioner, there's, there's, we've always had an annual inventory, but it was left up to the departments to do it. So two years ago.
Now, you have a master plan.
Well, two years ago, actually, an outside firm has come in to do it, to market the equipment and prioritize it, but list it. We actually have barcodes on, on things as well.
That's a good way, yeah.
As well as a, a tracking system, cloud-based.
Thirteen, thirteen gas generators in a year is just absolutely ridiculous. That's how many we have in the county? How many we had stolen in one year?
We lost them in a year.
Pumps, you name it, they were gone.
And there's, there's a little bit of two buckets there, which is kind of the de minimis supplies that you may have that could walk away. And then there's kind of the capital assets. So I would definitely recommend that you have barcoding and tracking of capital assets so they don't walk off. Okay, ready to keep going? Okay, the other thing was on page one fifty, there was a purchasing requirements, two thousand seventeen zero zero five. Took a sample of items that were run through the bid process. And we were unable to obtain documentation on some aspects of the bidding process. And so I think we wrote up our finding, generally speaking, that in our review of the sample that we looked at, that the county needs to review its policies there on how do we advertise and make sure that we follow all the steps related to the NRS. So I don't have specifics in front of me, but I could provide those to you if, if you'd like.
I'm interested in specifics, yes. I mean, that's something that needs to be ironclad.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I have a work paper that we kept track of the things that we looked for and things that we couldn't find. And so I'd be happy to send that to you.
I missed that, Brian, what did you say? I was like, that's something that needs to be ironclad. I mean, we have interest in this, anything over, what's the amount?
Uh, there's, there's different classifications for whether it's public works or below. But there's a fifty thousand dollar limit, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five.
So anytime we're in violation of NRS, yes, that's a major red flag, so. That's all I'm interested in, the specifics.
Okay, sounds good. I will pass this on to you. All right, so let's go to some financial highlights next. So on page eighteen in your financial statements, I've got, just wanted to take a quick look at the governmental funds for the county. Most of, a lot of the activity for Landry County goes through the general fund. So you can see on page eighteen that the bottom line change for this fund was to improve its financial position by two point eight million. The other major fund, the CCP fund, had quite a bit of act, of activity go through it during the year. Eleven point eight million in revenues and eleven point eight million in expenses. So it's kind of a break even year for that fund. And then the other governmental funds are a combination of all the other funds, governmental funds within the county. So the increase in those funds was two point one million for an overall increase for the governmental funds of four point nine million. I just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of that, and I'm going to go over the resources in each of the funds in my slides as I go through. But that's kind of the bottom line for the governmental funds. Let's look at page twenty-one for the business-type funds. This lists out your operating revenues and operating expenses. And Battle Mountain Water, Battle Mountain Sewer, both have a change in, change in net positions of two point eight million and two point nine million respectively. So, and I'll get into why the increases were so large in those funds. But it, it basically had to do with the donation of capital assets that were constructed in the governmental side of the house and then transferred over to water and sewer. So that's why they had large increases, is the capital assets switching over. So positive results for county and countywide. Let's go to some slides on some of your resources that are on hand. So this is in the general fund. Just a couple of things to point out here. Change in the fund balance is two point eight million. The unassigned, which is your top line here, is at thirty-nine point five million. And that was up nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand from the previous year. You have some assigned fund balance, which is the purple line, that's six point five million. And that is basically promised in the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget. So it's the assigned to that budget. You also have a committed fund balance here at one point three million. That's for retiree insurance. And then the restricted portion here, which is, is de minimis, but it's external restrictions for public safety purposes. So we got a gradual trend here and an improvement from the previous year. I don't see any issues with, with this. You have plenty of reserves on hand for the general fund operations. Any questions? This is your CCP fund. I wanted to point out that in the previous, or in the prior years from fiscal year fifteen to fiscal year seventeen, that was a period of construction where the, the county was using some of that fund, the funds to build the county administration building, Battle Mountain Recreation Center and other things. So that's the reason for the decline. From fiscal year eighteen to fiscal year nineteen, not a lot of change there. But there's. Um, but there's forty-two point eight million on hand at the end of fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. I, I already mentioned this, but in the CCP fund, there were two, there were major projects constructed for water and sewer, and then those were subsequently transferred over to the water and sewer funds. And then there was also a lot of roadwork that was done in the CCP fund. So probably you've talked about this in your budget and you're aware of, of some of the projects that were going on there. So Battle Mountain Water. So Battle Mountain Water, the increase in the net investment in capital assets, which is your twenty, twenty-two point one million there. That is, that top line represents the capital assets that are used to carry out the purposes of the water fund. So that was up from the previous year because of the donations from the governmental side of the house where assets were constructed and transferred over, so they had an increase there. The restricted, uh, amount in here, which I'll have to look and see, it's the red line, one point seven million, that is set aside for, uh, AB one ninety-eight, which is a reserve requirement. Uh, where the grantor requests, required the, the county to have ongoing reserves set aside, so that's the one point seven million. And then the unrestricted was up seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, that's your, your purple line there, two, it's at, uh, two point four million, and that's thirty-two months of operating reserves. So, in good shape in the water fund. Similar story here with Battle Mountain Sewer, uh, donation of assets caused its net investment in capital assets to go up to, uh, thirteen point five million. Uh, the restricted, restricted amounts here for the sewer fund is the county option sales tax reserve, that's a six, six, uh, six point two million. And then the unrestricted amount was up, uh, seven hundred and five thousand from the previous year, and that's eighty-five months of operating reserves. So, reserves are steady and climbing in a northeast fashion, northeast trend is what I, like, I think. Okay, and then cash balances, um, just a little bit of a comment here. Governmental cash for the governmental funds is up six point seven million, and business type, it's up one point eight million. Uh, and those are the balances on hand at the end of fiscal year nineteen. So, uh, I wanted to say thank you to my audit team as well for making it happen. It's, it's hard to summarize, uh, six or seven hundred hours of work in fifteen minutes, but we appreciate all the efforts of the county staff, including my staff and Jeff. Jeff is my audit manager, he does a great job, and so we encourage you to reach out with any questions you may have. That's it.
Thank you, other than the, um, stuff with our, um, what we wanted the information on, just do a blank.
The purchasing, the NRS purchasing.
Yes, all those, yeah, that's what I'd like to see.
Any comments?
Thanks. I, I would just, if we could go back to the bid part of it. It was, if I remember correctly in our discussion, it had to do with advertising mostly. And, and how we advertised, and it was that you guys couldn't find the advertisements. If, am I correct, Chad?
Yeah, there was some information that we couldn't locate or put our fingers on, so.
Right, and just to put your mind a little bit at ease, Commissioner, that, those advertisements are kept by the engineer of record. So one of the things we're in the process of changing is we will a- also keep the documents that they keep, the engineer, because the engineer's the one that does the advertising. We will also keep those in the county as well for the future. So we're aware of that, it wasn't, we didn't do anything incorrectly or illegally, it's just we didn't have the, the documentation to back it up. It's with the engineers.
I'd like to see your current policy on that as well.
Okay, I got it right here.
Yeah, and, and the actual wording on it from our auditor said, "We could not verify that the county properly solicited or advertised bids according to NRS three three two."
And that's a, that's a.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we need to clear, maybe need a clear line, so.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Sometimes it's just a documentation issue.
Right.
We can't see clearly what went on, so.
So Chad, I think still that information, if you could make it available to us, the deficiencies and whatnot. Thank you.
If you'll send me an email, I'll be hap- I don't know who I should direct it to, but if you'll send me.
I think everyone.
Everyone?
Yeah.
All right.
Transparency, and you give it to one, you need to give it to all.
Sounds good, and your email addresses are.
I'll get them to you, Chad.
Located. As long as I can get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also, um, just a, a quick comment for the record, as part of our financial package, um, we do have the response uh, from our Lander County Fiscal Officer, Cynthia Benson, and that starts on page one fifty-one with, um, what we are doing to be in compliance. So I want that on the record, that that's also part of it.
Thank you, yes, should have pointed that out, but thank you.
That's okay, thank you. Um, with that, uh, and our humble thanks, and which is for a beautiful holiday season, we are going to take a ten minute break.
Thank you, Austin.
Did you guys make a motion on this to accept?
No, we did not.
No, we haven't done anything yet.
Okay.
We're just breaking and catching up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, we are going to call our meeting back to order. We are still on agenda item number ten. To accept or deny the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen audit report.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, audit report.
I'll second it.
Thank you for having me make the motion, and Kathy seconded that, any other discussion? No, but they will be throughout the year, I'm sure. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and that passes, thank you so much. Number eleven, county manager for hospital action to approve or disapprove with the closure of all Lander County buildings at twelve PM on December twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, with the exception of the Lander County Senior Centers to close anytime after one PM. This is not a dedicated holiday.
So we, uh, we got together, I got together with the elected officials, and we came up with a general, um, unanimous consensus that we would like to request, my department included, we would like to request that the county commissioners give us, uh, a closing time on December twenty-fourth of twelve noon uh, in observance of, uh, Christmas Eve Day, to allow people to go home and get ready for Christmas.
So that would be countywide, twelve o'clock when shut down?
With, with the exception of the senior centers, because the senior centers serve lunch, so once they finish with lunch, then we'd like to ask for them to be able to close early as well.
Question, how do other, how do other counties do that?
It's kind of a mix. Um, one county doesn't do it, period. Another county I spoke with leaves it up to the, um, uh, the individual department heads and elected officials. So it's really a mix, but, um.
Well, the federal employees are all getting off.
And I was going to say, yes, uh, President Trump, twenty twenty, decided to give, uh, federal employees a day off. Um, and it's also, it's actually in, in the union contract, which states, um, all the hol- holidays that are listed, uh, through the year, and it says any other day declared illegal holiday or day of mourning by the President of the United States, Governor of the State of Nevada, or the, the Lander County Commissioners. That's right out of the, the book. Uh, union, uh, contract. Discussed it with the sheriff's office, um, and their association president is, and, uh, bargaining team is, or president is good with it, no issues at this point.
Yeah, I see, the only thing is, if we did approve it, we should make sure that everybody understands in the county that, that's what we're doing. So people, we don't hear that, you know, we came in and they're closed, we couldn't conduct business.
If, if this is approved, it will be, well, we don't have time to get it in the paper, but we'll certainly put posts or, or, uh, put it on our boards at the rec center, civic center, as well as, um, we'll put some notices up where we hang our agendas and, and the door.
So I just want to say that, uh, Thanksgiving, uh, the day before Thanksgiving, which actually the day following, is a family day. It is recognized by the county that the employees would have that day off. And the majority of the offices in the courthouse were closed by noon on the day prior to Thanksgiving. And we work for the public, and a lot of the public doesn't get the day off before Christmas or get off early at noon. Is, I think that, and we have to, we work for them, we have to be available to them, and sure, it's really nice, but by the same token, they're not getting off early. As I mentioned before, the day for, day before Thanksgiving, most of the offices were closed, that did not come before the commission, and I am opposed to this, I think that, you know, it should be a full day as planned.
May I clarify on that? Because I can tell you for a fact, my office was open, I let my staff go, and, and the majority of the offices in this building let their staffs go, and the elected department head, or the elected officials, as well as myself, I know I was here till four thirty, or four fifteen. I, I talked with, uh, one of the DMV clerks in my office until four fifteen that day. I had the D, the DA's office, she was here until four, four or four fifteen. I believe Sadie, oh, I believe she was here until five that day. Um, I, I, I believe the, the staff was let go, but the elected official or department head stayed until late in the day, so until five, like I said, I did leave at four fifteen that day.
If they take off at noon, are they paid for a full day or only half a day?
They're, they're given the full day.
They're paid for the full day?
Yeah, it's administrative leave is what it is, paid administrative.
Well, and I do have to say that, um, I, I am aware that you let your staff go, and you were in the office, I know Sad- Sadie was in his off, in her office. I know there was different department heads or, or different elected officials' offices, which is at their discretion to some degree. Uh, as far as the DMV, no, it was not open in the afternoon.
Yes, it was, but four thirty. Leslie Bunch for the record.
Come on up, Leslie, please.
I want to clarify a few things, I'm glad you brought this up. Um, Leslie Bunch for the record, Lander County Court. You have to remember, DMV is a contract with me, it is not part of my elected position, it is not anything to do with anything other as a courtesy to the county, which I believe is a very good courtesy. You have thirty days prior to your renewal date to get your renewals done. If you wait till the day before Thanksgiving or Christmas to come in and do your, uh, registration renewals, part of that's on you, not on us. We did have an employee here till four fifteen or four thirty, I believe she was.
Four thirty, yeah, four fifteen.
Yeah, and so she always takes lunch from two to three. There's not, there was nothing changed there, we did have someone available. The individual that had the issue on Facebook was called, I did talk to her, prior to talking to my employee to make sure both sides of the story before anything was finalized. Um, their stories were very concurrent, however, one stormed out, stormed out, um, very upset, the son of the individual was very upset, saying every foul word you could hear, and I'm sorry, I wouldn't make my employee work with someone like that anyway. If you can't.
No way.
Conduct business in a civil mantle, manner, which they were never denied. Um, I'm sorry, I would not make anybody in my office work for, with someone like that anyway. Um, there was no inconvenience, the individual, the first individual that had five renewals to do, did get helped, did get taken care of before the office closed. But we were closed for an hour for lunch, which we have the right to do. As far as recording does, goes, there was absolutely no issues there whatsoever.
Uh, can I ask?
And we didn't know till ten o'clock in the morning that day, that everybody else was letting everybody go. So there was a little bit of, um, inconsistency too, so.
So DMV would fall under state?
Yes, under state.
So, and do they recognize it as a holiday, state?
It doesn't matter, it's my contract, I can work with that.
I, I don't know if the state has recognized, I don't have any information on that, I just have the, the, uh, the one that President Trump signed in front of me. I, I don't know, and, and just for clarification, this, it's just for this day, we're not, we, we all agreed that New Year's Day, we're not going to ask for it, we're not going to do anything there. And next year for the, uh, day before Thanksgiving, we have four days off.
And then my other question is, if it's part of our union negotiated contract.
Yes.
That you just read.
Yes.
It's an option, it's not set.
Is it an option, or is it something that we?
It's a. It's not, it's, it's not harmful to the employee, it's a benefit to the employee. And any business agent that would fight something like this is a fool, speaking of being president of the Teachers Association for ten years. Because we do the same thing in education, on the last day of school, we'll all meet, we'll have a half hour meeting, and then the principal says, "Stay if you want, go home if you want," it's, it's the same thing.
So in the union contract, it lists all the holidays, and then it says that, you know, um, any other day declared illegal holiday.
Right.
But it's up to the Lander County Commissioners.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
In addition to the normal listed holidays. So that's, that's your.
My, my, my last question is, historically, how, how busy is that day, historically?
Yeah, there you go. Now Ted, Ted?
Yes.
I have a question. Can the commission make a rule that affects all the public elected officials? In other words, if we didn't address this at all, could the public elected officials still allow their employees to leave?
In, in certain, certain cases, uh, in certain circumstances, yes, as long as they're in compliance with the statute. NRS two four five point zero four oh, and that's what was handed out to the commission in the prior meeting. Uh, it states which offices need to be open, and it also states in subsection four that it can be deviated, uh, by the county commissioner. Now, this statute contemplates an ongoing deviation, and that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for a one, one and a half day deviation. So you certainly can do it, and, uh, it, like, my, my office, for instance, the DA's office, it's not on the list here. The, um, as Leslie Bunch pointed out to you, department motor vehicle, it's not controlled by the county commissioners, that's a contract with her, and, and it's not part of her official duties.
But don't we budget for her, her employee that runs the DMV? Don't we set the budget for that?
Yes, you, that's what you guys can do, budget for, just like my office.
So we do have some business in it?
Right.
Right.
A- as far as budget.
Right, exactly.
Uh, but as far as the hours of operation, to answer the question.
Right.
In certain cases, yes, and in certain cases, no.
Right.
And I just used two, I brought up two examples of, no. And, but there's a lot of yes examples, and, and some of it, they're all listed here. The offices need to be open unless it's deviated permanently or, or just by peace.
Right, and you said it, you said that asking for a day and a half is just a half a day.
Just a half a day, yeah, just half a day.
So, so historically, it's not very busy, and we notify taxpayers, hey guys, our department's going to be closed at noon, if you have any business to do, please get in before noon before we do it. I mean, it's typically, it is, and I speak from private sector, it, it is pretty busy on, I mean, pretty slow on that day. People are getting, you know, with their families and getting ready for Christmas, and so, I mean, I, I don't know, that's my thought.
And we as a hospital board, um, voted to do that, give the half a day off as well.
So, so legally you can do it, is, I guess my only point, legally you can do it. I'm not taking position on whether you should or not.
Right.
Well, I, I think it's a courtesy that is well deserved by our staff.
Okay, can I say something, please?
Their moms and dads.
Thank you. Denise Fortune, oh.
Just a minute, let me open it up for public comment, hang on just a second till we finish discussing. You all set? Okay, yes, thank you, Judge, I'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Denise Fortune for our Jenna Justice Court. I was an elected official that stayed, uh, the day before, uh, Thanksgiving and let my girls go. Um, and I stayed until four thirty and worked, it was very quiet, I think my phone rang once, nobody came to the counter, and Justice Court is usually pretty busy. I am one of those that are excluded from this, I, the judicial does not fall under it. Uh, I can close whenever I want, and it doesn't fall under it, but here's the thing that I wanted to bring to a point. I do not like it not to be fair to the other employees. I could let my girls go home on Christmas Eve, but if the whole county doesn't do it, I just feel that it's not real fair for everybody else. Because I can't stay this year, I stayed on Thanksgiving, I cannot stay on Christmas Eve.
I stayed on Thanksgiving, I cannot stay on Christmas Eve. I don't want to leave and have my girls have to work. I think everybody in the county, we get one day off for Christmas, that's it. People have kids, people have families, people have to cook, people have things that are going on. I just think across the board, it should be not up to the elected officials. And we talked about this in the meeting, it is up to the elected officials. We can, we can do it, but we also want to be fair to the other county employees. So that's why as a group, we decided to come, Keith was going to come to you guys for us. And we're all here to say, if you just close it and say noon for everybody, then it doesn't put the burden on us and it makes it fair for everybody.
So your plea is for courtesy for all the employees?
All the employees to be able to go at noon on Christmas Eve.
Your all parents, your all-
Exactly.
Aunts, uncles, grandmas, grandpas, CCs and honeys?
Right, so that's, that's all I have to say.
And I agree, it's like it's all, everyone or, you know, no one. That's, needs to be a question.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll make the, a motion to approve the closure of the Lander County buildings at twelve o'clock PM on December twenty fourth, with the exception of the Lander County Senior Senator to close after one PM. This is not a dedicated holiday.
I'll second the motion.
Kathy made the motion and Brian seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Thank you, Judy. Number twelve, county manager. For possible action approved, disapproved and modified interstate interlocal contract between Lander County and the state of Nevada acting by and through its Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Healthcare Financing and Policy and Division of Welfare and Supportive Services for medical assistance provided in Nevada under authority of the title, gee, which one is that? Nineteen? Nineteen? Thank you. Of the Social Security Act, contract without modifications having been previously approved on July eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at a regularly scheduled Lander County Commissioner meeting. It is also requested to approve the chair or vice chair to sign.
So like it says, Commissioners, this was approved July eleventh, two thousand nineteen at a regular meeting. There's, the only change to it is the state wanted to take out, it's on page three of three of the old contract, under E Edward number four, it talks about populations in counties of more than a hundred thousand. We're obviously not over a hundred thousand, so they removed item four and you can see that in your current contract.
Page three of three?
Yes, page three of three, item E, all parties agree. Number four in the old contract talks about counties with over one hundred thousand. The new contract, same, same area, section E, they took out the one hundred thousand counting because we're under a hundred thousand. So they took out one paragraph, nothing else changed.
Got it. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the modified interstate interlocal agreement.
I'll make the motion to modify the interstate interlocal contract between Lander County and the state of Nevada, acting by and through its Department of the Health and Human Services, Division of Healthcare Financing Policy and Division of Welfare and Supportive Services for medical assistance provided in Nevada under authority of title X one X. I don't know what that was.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, Roman Newble, it's been a long time, excuse me, of nineteen. This Social Security Act contract without modifications having been previously approved on July eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at the regularly scheduled Lander County Commission meeting. It is also requested to approve the chair or vice chair to sign.
I'll second.
Kathy made the motion and Brian seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, and that one passes. Number thirteen, county manager. For possible action on current and updated information regarding the airport water line loop and direction from the county commissioners on an option to proceed, including but not limited to easements, relocation, addition of water tanks or airway domain as presented by Aaron Martinez of AM Engineering. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Merry Christmas. I hope everyone's doing well. Aaron Martinez for the record, I'm the owner of AM Engineering. And today I'm here to discuss secondarily, as we had discussed in that previous meeting, the old eight A mainline transmission loop. I'm going to be kind of speaking from a thirty thousand foot level, so again, if you have any questions, just drop, stop me and I'll be happy to answer in the, in between my presentation here. So again, loop mainline. Our point will work good here, again, Aaron Martinez. So what we're here today to discuss is there was a property owner that had rescinded the acceptance of an easement that allowed the transmission mainline to go through this parcel. I've asked some of the remaining parcel owners that are in favor of that mainline perpetuating through their property. I've asked them to come today. There was some discussion that those owners were not in participation with this in that previous meeting. That is not correct and those individuals are here to express that. Okay, so John Wayne wants to know what we're doing here, so let's get straight to it. Basically, we have an old eight A loop mainline that's here. That's a, being a part of an existing project, which is the airport loop project, which gets water to the airport. This loop mainline here is something that's came on in the rather short term. Primarily has to do with occupancy, which I identified in the last meeting. That occupancy is what is actually at the airport. To the State Fire Marshal's Office, we're being required to up that fire flow requirement at the airport. Through day engineering, report modeling, what we've been able to identify is in order to achieve that one hour minimum fire flow requirement, we're initiating a phase two loop project into a phase one initiative, which is the loop mainline. By bringing that loop mainline and teaming to this location right here, what that allows is to achieve that one hour of fire flow at the airport per day engineering's model. So I was tasked with an objective since that rescinded parcel came part of the requirement. I was tasked by the county manager and frankly through the commission's decision at that time to proceed with the project and essentially find solutions on how we can proceed. So I think some of the solutions that I've identified in my option analysis are touchy to particular owners. I just want to make it clear, I have no partial bias as to where this thing goes. I don't care where it goes. As an engineer and surveyor, you tell me where it'll go, I'll engineer the heck out of it and get it there. So I know that there's some touchy items discussed in here. Again, I am nonpartial to any of that and happy to look at any options. So again, that current option that I'll go over right now is again, that mainline loop that comes from the old eight A. What this exhibit here, which is exhibit one, answers Commissioner Allen's request for additional information as it related to the timing in which the old eight A loop mainline was created. I'd like to draw the commission's attention to this timestamp here and the actual timestamp and time of the plot for the old eight A loop exhibit. This project starts all the way back September two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Yes.
Actually, to clarify that, it wasn't so much as when the initial project started as when the loop-
That's, that's what this exhibit is here. That exhibit one shows you that loop coming from the bottom edge of these parcels. What we did, kind of as a global portion for this project, is working with Battle Mountain Line Company. We tried to target some, the airport water line project initially and then where could we feasibly do a loop line as a phase two initiative? That was something that was a part of the project from the very beginning because we were concerned of the fire flow abilities of the current system. So we knew that a loop mainline was most certainly going to be a part of this project at some point or another. Basically, through the NDEP process and the water modeling and the occupancy at the airport, we were basically targeted with that fifteen hundred gallons a minute. With just the loop, without the loop mainline and just the mainline going to the airport, that was about twelve hundred gallons a minute of fire flow. So really, this loop is kicking us up about five hundred to a thousand GPMs, which puts us right around eighteen hundred to two thousand GPMs of fire flow to the airport. There will be a fire hydrant at the airport as well as utilizing it for the fueling stations and supplementing that current well system at the airport. So a little bit of a parcel map here to kind of have you understand where we're at. I know it's a little hard to see, but those are the existing tanks right here. This is the existing sixteen inch loop that runs basically parallel to three oh five. We're going to be hooking into that sixteen inch mainline and perpetuating across these parcels to get over to Sheep Creek Road.
And Aaron, which parcels, which parcels are, that we're debating right now?
So- Great question. So I'll draw your attention to exhibit five, which gives you the exact parcels. And I'll go back to one of my previous exhibits so you can kind of see a little bit better which ones are.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we kind of have Sheep Creek Road right here, okay? These three parcels here, which I believe that represented is here. We have this parcel owner here who has attended and is here today, as well as to the right over here, the Battle Mountain Line Company representatives are also here, they can speak during the public comment period if necessary. Does that answer your question, Mr. Ford?
Yeah.
Let's get back to my- We're getting too far, sorry, yes. Okay, so what we've been tasked with is, again, we have this current alignment that I've identified to you. The parcel owners rescinded that, which is what you're seeing here. So from an engineering perspective, the, the most cost efficient route that I can come up with at this juncture of the project is what I'm calling this design option one. Essentially, what that design option does is it takes a ninety degree turn prior to that parcel. We then jump onto BLM ground for about two thousand four hundred linear feet before then heading back on to private property and continuing on the original alignment that was intended for this project. Some of the pros and cons that I've identified in this analysis are, some of it are my opinion. For instance, I don't believe in placing public infrastructure on federal land because it doesn't have that three sixty effect that I talked to you guys about previously.
Can you explain that to me? I apologize, I don't think I was here for that meeting. Because that was one of my questions, is why don't we just go to, through the BLM section?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a belief that I think that I've expressed and then some folks can take that on. It's totally up to you. It's my belief that you have to have a three hundred and sixty degree impact with my tax dollars. So if you invest my tax dollars in a particular area as a resident, I want to see that expanded three hundred and sixty degrees. And how, what that means is literally, who can tie into that water line? Who can develop on that water line? Who can expand on that water line? And ultimately, does it pay back the taxpayers and make it worth our investment? We as taxpayers are paying for this infrastructure. To go place it on federal land is just really not something that I'm typically comfortable with. Because what that does is that, that increases that entire parcel for the BLM. That's a full section, two thousand linear feet. You can do the numbers in terms of cost. What that does is technically increases that, that property value inadvertently. And again, the land restrictions as to how I can tie into that water line later, there are some significant things that only legal would be able to tell you properly because there are some limitations once that water line is on federal land. Secondarily, with certain fund allocations from the government, I know that once that land is, has that water line on there, your ability to use it in the future is obviously limited. And that's why we don't recommend it on any federal land. So that's why, the other side as too, we have this timeframe issue. Currently, we're, Lander County is under a development agreement that's, that has to be executed and continued forward. So we're under serious time constraints that the county manager can identify to you that talks about how this project is trying to push forward outside of these, these minor changes here. So with that, the timeframe to work with the BLM is a concern. And that's what I'm explaining in this report is, there's six months to nine months of typical working with to obtain that easement. So that is a potential concern. Any questions on design option one? I'm going to get into the financial numbers of design option one in just a moment. Okay, sign option two. So I start with this design option by telling you, there's a hundred different routes you can go. If someone would like to sit down on a parcel map and identify me something better, I have all ears. Please come to my office. So what we've tried to do is identify a feasible route that provides us the end fire flow requirement. Everyone keeps asking me, Aaron, why don't you go north? Well, if I go north, I don't tie into this portion of the loop line here, which is trying to force more gallons per minute down the system's throat to get to the airport. So if I go north, it really does me no good. We're coming from the north. Our original line ties in at three oh five near the county airport, or county building right here, just right on this corner, and comes down. So it does not do us any good to do anything north. So that's not even near any of my recommendations. If anything, just scrap the loop line altogether because going north does you nothing. Going south is a potential options for future growth. It's a pretty significant expenditure and I'm going to get into that a little bit. But going south essentially, we would come off the tanks or near the tanks, potentially even a new tank. These water modeling features would have to be figured out. But hypothetically, if we come off the tanks and then perpetuate across some private land and then again, BLM land, this is that same section here, BLM land, we would then come across that BLM land and then eventually try to hook up to old eight A that way. So that is what we could identify as the secondary route for this old eight A loop line. Okay, so some of the biggest, so some of the biggest concerns for this old eight A loop line is this smaller exhibit that I've provided to you folks in your packets. This was provided by the BLM. What it identifies is the critical sage grouse area that these habitat management plans have been trying to grapple with. Essentially, what we're seeing here is a byproduct of, the federal government was really trying to push on the sage grouse habitat and you guys know all about that. So Nevada combated that with a few of these studies in order to keep the federal government out of our habitat management plan. This map here identifies the critical sage grouse area. As you can see, our tanks are essentially sitting right on that habitat area. And so any future development that comes off of that is going to be a significant environmental impact statement or assessment. So those right there, when you talk EA's or EIS's, we're talking a year to two years of just studying. And then in terms of what it takes to mitigate those items, and like for instance, if we did put our new tank or a new trench line, there's mitigation measures that will be enforced on that project. Could be reseeding, it could be as much as farming your own sage grouse to replenish the numbers in which you affected. Okay, so there's some serious ramifications there. So John Wayne wants to know, it all sounds good, but what's the cost and it has? So design option one, and I know it's a little hard to read. Design option one has a two point six percent of project increase, which amounts to about twenty five thousand five hundred dollars. So by doing that design option one, where I take that ninety degree and come back off that parcel here and coming over, the cost impact of doing this minor design change is about twenty five thousand.
So that makes an overall cost of right around a million bucks, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So again, two point six percent increase, that does include any additional engineering in surveying as well as a five thousand dollar contingency, which is about forty five percent. On the design option two, the hard tangible costs that I was able to identify, basically just on water line alone, you're about an extra two million dollars. The, the potential cost that I'm discussing here of, of a potential four million dollars has to do with another one million gallon tank. If we do expand the water system as much as I'm showing here, there's early water model studies we've been performing that talks about us just kind of needing to upgrade our system tank wise in order to even continue to feed that type of water line. in order to even continue to feed that type of water line. So what you're seeing in some of these costs that I've identified in this analysis here is there's a basically a one million gallon storage tank there. So with the storage tank and the, and the water line installation, you're staring at about four point two million dollars of additional cost to do design option two. And then lastly, the unknown, and I think the scariest unknown is the sage grouse habitat impact and the timeframe for those studies to be finalized. Any questions on design option two?
Yeah, a question. Which design is going to deliver the gallons per minute needed at the airport?
Say that one more time, Mark.
Which design is the efficient design to get the water to the airport at the proper, at the proper flow?
So the most efficient design would be the current alignment. The second most efficient would be design option one. The, design option two would most certainly get those same flows or more to the airport if we did the design option.
And that includes a million doll, a million gallon tank?
Not a tank, yeah, you'd probably want to upsize that tank. And that was one caveat I wanted to leave you with on design option two. We haven't been paid to fully analyze that through, obviously you're not gonna pay us a lot of money to analyze the design of that unless you embark on that.
Keith, so this is all to stay in compliance with the airport. Is this on our FAA grants that we get?
It, it has to do with the fire flow requirements through the state fire marshal's office because the airport is considered an occupied building. So it has to do with our.
So this is the state?
And I believe we also got something from, was it EPA?
On, in terms of?
In terms of the fire flow.
Uh, no, strictly from the state fire marshal's office.
Okay, so the state, yes.
So I have a question on the, on number two. Now you were saying the sage grouse, so at some point that water line can be restricted because it's federal land? Is that what you were saying?
So on design option two, that's this guy, right? And, and it's near and around the sage grouse habitat. So could it be restricted? Um, no, because eventually we would have developed those easements, so then it's kind of ours within that easement. But in terms of the cost impact of the project, again, they may say, okay, you're gonna go disturb this many acres, you're gonna have to go reseed those acres, you technically kill this many sage grouse, you have to go farm that sage grouse. You'll see a lot of the mines have these farms for sage grouse and then they're showing that they're replanting those.
Okay.
And so that's the impact.
So Aaron.
Yes.
I understand the, the phase two and, and the importance of what the fire marshal is saying and why we are increasing our timeframe here. But have you talked to the fire marshal about the fact that we may not do project two and what would happen if we didn't do it? Is he going to disa, is he going to disapprove?
He has no control.
Yeah, I mean, I understand why and it would be the best, but, but if we can't, we can't.
Yeah, so if you couldn't do it, if you said, we're just not going to. Uh, the fire marshal cannot deviate. He's strictly held by a very specific code, so he goes by occupancy of the facility and then it goes into usage and occupancy to then identify those fire flow requirements. So he can't waver, it's simply through code. Now in terms of whether Lander County wants to move forward with that phase two or not, would essentially not allow the entire project to be accepted wholly because the phase one project, and then we go to that document. Essentially everything's hanging on, on this, on this loop line, to give you an idea, um, to answer as quickly as possible. So again, we have the airport water line that's coming like so, correct? I cannot achieve my fire flow at the airport without this loop line. It's as simple as that. So if NDEP will not give us approval to construct the water line, unless we can achieve the fire marshal's concerns of the fire flow.
How'd this all come about? Did the fire marshal come in and audit our airport water flow?
No, this is simply a bureaucratic process. You have NDEP who coordinates with these respective agencies to get them all teed up on any new coming project. So then everything has to be brought exactly to code, including evaluating the system as a communal water system where we actually go through and evaluate if there's twenty-five or more users across the entire spectrum and tie those in too. So you'll actually see us tying in the racetrack, the motor cross track, because those feed more than twenty-five people. So what we're doing is this, the federal government and the state require that when you add water line, that certain areas be added on that system so that they're being provided the federal drinking standard requirements. And that's really what it comes down to.
So we don't have any option of like just drilling more wells? Why can't we just drill more wells?
There's always more options, yes, you could definitely drill more wells. The concern, I think, in the long-term approach that you'll want to consider is to achieve federal drinking water standards is an extremely stringent process for Lander County, right? You guys have to find the right wells, make sure that the wells meet the proper requirements to then add them to the tanks. And so with the airport, it is not on a standard as of right now. So technically, some of that water is maybe not meeting those federal standards. So that is a liability concern that you'll want to consider in the long term.
Okay, but we still have bottom lines here. And the bottom line is, we haven't had it before, what if we don't do it now?
The project won't happen.
Right, and if the project doesn't happen?
If the project doesn't happen, it affects, it affects the airport. It affects our air tanker operations.
How does it affect it? Do they shut us down? Is that what happens?
I don't know if they necessarily shut us down, but it does affect, for instance, the air tanker operations and the water that they need for, um, retardant.
Well, that's the thing, is what Patty's saying, I'm sorry, I interrupted. It's been, we've done it for years. I, I used to work at the tanker base.
Right.
So why all of a sudden is it this like urgent thing that we do it? That's what, I understand the question, I'm just, I'd like a clear answer on it.
So it's, it's, it's to better the airport. If, if we ever get, um, an industrial park out there, it's, it, it's to better the air tanker operations, it's to better the overall condition of the airport. Right now, out at the racetrack, they can't even flush a toilet and run a sink at the same time and let alone drink it. They can't drink the water because it's, that doesn't meet any standard.
Plus we have a contract.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, yeah, I, that's secondary, but we do have a contract in place and we're gonna go over the legal end of that contract later in the, in the.
But to answer your question fully, we're under a contractual obligation.
I understand that, but sometimes it's easier to buy out somebody over here and, and arbitrate for no lawsuit. So I'm not concerned about that right now. I'm concerned about where we are, what we're gonna do, and we're on a time constraint to do this. But if we weren't on a time constraint, so we pay off, you know, Battle Mountain Company or whatever that we had this agreement with. Now, we know this is for the future and we understand how important it is. But I'm saying it's not gonna happen today. And all our options are gonna take longer and they're gonna be more expensive, right? There isn't any option that we can do today that would put us on the contract and make everything go away.
No.
Not one.
No.
But how expensive is that loss, is that buyout or the lawsuit?
Well, that's what we have to assess, yeah.
Lots.
More than four million, more than four million dollars?
Lawsuit.
A few million dollars, I think.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna go, they would go after their loss.
Yeah.
They, the loss to them because.
Future loss.
Future loss.
It's a long time million dollar liability.
Okay, but we don't have any option that can meet that contract right now.
Well.
I'm not sure that's correct.
I don't know.
Hit me if I jump in here, but the design option one is a trigger, full trigger option right now that moves you forward.
Right.
Today.
For an additional twenty-five thousand. Do we already have the nine hundred dollar budget?
That's not my fee, I have nothing to do with that.
So the nine hundred, so that fee's scheduled for one. Has it already been that nine hundred thousand?
That's, that's there.
It's already budgeted.
Right.
So what do you say would be an additional, maybe twenty-five thousand dollars?
Or you could do design option.
And this is something that's been in the works since twenty seventeen, correct?
Yes, plus, we are gonna have to either, there's the two options that, I know Aaron doesn't want to touch this, but one of them is a BLM easement, which we've been working on BLM to see what we can. The other one is the eminent domain option, which I have yet to cover. You kind of skirt it around.
That takes us.
So I'm bringing it out.
That takes us longer than I contract on both of them.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Yeah, so what?
It'll take the most time.
So what's our option that we can get in and still do the timeframe?
There isn't one unless the landowner agrees to what we previously agreed to.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Well, design option one may, we may be able to do it.
We may, I, I don't want to put timeframes out there and I know at one point Aaron had some six, six to twelve month timeframes. There's things that we may be able to do with, with the county to work with the BLM to push it up, to maybe get as, and I'm not, I, I don't want this to be taken as a commitment. Really could be as little as three months to get that easement in place to do, to do his little, uh.
Well, you would, you would think if we're gonna run it on BLM land, it betters that BLM parcel. Why wouldn't, I don't understand why old property owners wouldn't be in favor of having that, that option on their property.
Yes, and that's part of the, the argument on, from the county side is it betters the airport air tanker operation. That's one of them. But they still have to do different studies and so forth. So there's, there, rather than the BLM doing them, maybe the county will hire a private person, private entity or vendor to go in and do the study, which it'll get done faster that way rather than, which they will accept. We've, we've discussed that.
So I have a question real quick. So if it goes on the BLM land, are the people that are protesting at this time, can they tie, tie into that line?
So that's something I want to bring forward is if that's the way we go, I, rather than a, the landowner coming forth and just going to the water department saying, I want to hook up, I would recommend that somewhere we put that, that landowner has to ask permission of the commission to put in water lining, uh, service.
Yeah, they could pay it back to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, I don't, I don't, I, I don't think that's gonna work because, um, just saying a landowner has to ask permission. I mean, they can sell the property and then somebody else can just come over and tie in if we don't have. I mean, it has to be whatever we decide to do. If that landowner is causing us to do this extra expense and doesn't want that going by their property, then that property's gonna have to be excluded.
Going through the property, not, we'll, we'll go around it.
Right, but I'm saying.
Twenty-five feet difference is what we're talking about here.
I, I understand that. But, but I'm saying, just to say that landowner would have to come before us is going, I mean, you're gonna have to do it where it's excluded from, because otherwise they can sell it to somebody and they can just hook on.
I mean, this, 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 yeah, and this is where I have a problem is like, I believe a man's private property is his private property. So eminent domain, yeah, I understand it's within a power. I don't like it, I don't understand why you wouldn't want to as a property owner, you know, because it makes it very convenient. It's like, it's, yeah, it just, it, it makes it nice if you want to do something in the future. So I don't understand that point.
It raises your property values.
But what, but then on the same token, you know, I'm not all about government coming in and saying, we're gonna take it, you know, and this is how we're gonna do it, you know, I just.
Well, it would take us much longer than that to do eminent domain anyway. It really would, so that's, I don't think that's possible. So when's the last time you've talked to the landowner?
Which landowner were you speaking to?
The one that, well, the one that rescinded.
So I was directed by the commission to proceed, what's, uh, their representative identified that concern. I actually met with, uh, the individual that I had been working with and I met him on site uh, per the direction of the county manager. And, um, at that time, he expressed that he would no longer be a part of the project. So that was the day after that special meeting.
Okay, well then whatever they do, that, that property has to be excluded from ever tying on.
Well, I agree with that, Patty.
I think, I think legally you'll have some, some rough path getting there. I think there's a few easement options you'll want to look at, one called a warrant easement. There's some particular easements you'll want to look at that would probably help you identify some of that.
So you think the one coming across to the BLM is possible to do within our timeframe?
If you're asking my opinion, yes, I think that it's possible. Um, we, I think it's gonna take some serious close collaboration to achieve those timeframes because nothing with the federal government is.
It just seems with all the property we own, that somewhere we can do another loop and tie in somewhere else to, I mean, I, I, I don't understand that.
I think I, and I, I'll be happy to go over that exhibit again if you'd want to see that one more time.
No, 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 I, I understand this part.
Several parcel owners, there's several BLM parcels separating us from those loops. And that is really the difference between it is, yes, we could go other areas, but ultimately you're still crossing BLM land and, and, and essentially nothing north of our current loop alignment helps us. So when you start to look south, the numbers start to climb astronomically. The route I gave you is by far the shortest route you can achieve on the parcel. So it's outside of that, it's a twenty, thirty, forty million dollar infrastructure.
And with the lands bill, can it be stated in there somewhere that they don't prohibit us from, at any time of blocking that, or what, the water that we, line that we've put in there?
I wouldn't say necessarily our lands bill, but in our easement agreement, and I, and all in general, we may be able to go in and negotiate something as part of the easement agreement with them. Once the commission decides the direction to go, that, like I say, we've made contact. We had a meeting, uh, last week, I think, with BLM and we went over all the different options. And speaking with BLM, they, they are very willing to work with us to get this easement in place and fast track it, so to speak.
Well, because I don't think it's fair that a taxpayer should have to pay multi-million dollars for us to put in a tank and all, you know, the other options. I just think that that's ludicrous to have to do, to do that. I also don't want the taxpayers, um, us being sued and them having to take, pay out for a lawsuit either. So at the twenty-five thousand and fast tracking with a BLM would be the most financially, um, sound way to go.
It doesn't seem like we have any other choices really at this point.
There's other choices, they just cost a lot of money.
Well, I don't, the, the better choice.
This lawsuit, maybe we can mention, I'm in the dark about it. We're gonna talk about that after the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, it's part of the contract we had been to twenty seventeen.
Seventeen, correct, with Battle Mountain.
Oh, for, oh.
So, so he can be in the loop on this, is there, can we bring, just set these on the agenda for the next meeting? So he's in full understanding of what it, I mean, is it gonna send us back that far?
We can talk about that in litigation.
Okay, okay.
Because it's currently in litigation.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on it? What's your pleasure?
We have public comment.
I'm sorry, Judy?
I said we have public comment if you wanted to open it up.
Oh, yes, Donnie, come on up.
Uh, I'd like to ask Aaron Martinez how wide.
Would you please come through?
We need you to come up for the recording, thank you.
And identify yourself first, Donnie.
Donald Negro, uh, landowner and taxpayer in Lander County. I'd like to ask Aaron how wide of easement you are.
I'm sorry. Uh, yeah. Uh, that documentation's been provided. Uh, I typically don't answer directly during public comment period. Uh, we can answer your questions in writing and you please submit through the county manager's office. Thank you.
Okay, and my feelings, you know, what you're doing here, it hasn't been budgeted for. This other loop road or loop line, why don't you go back up to the tank and hook into the tank? If someone hits that, that line down below, we're screwed, excuse the expression. Uh, you know, and now's the, now's the time to do it. Go through, when you do your budgeting and budget money to do it right. Because if we're, you know, we're getting growth from Battle Mountain down the road like we did, say, ten years ago, you know, what are we gonna do?
Two questions. I thought it was budgeted for, I thought we already budgeted nine, some thousand dollars. So that is correct?
Yes, it is budgeted for commission.
Okay, and then the water tank you're talking about, Donnie, is that the one out by the, the dump area?
Yeah.
Would that, is that an option, a viable option?
Yes, if there's sparks, what is a viable?
If we, if we came, if, came off our, our water tanks over to the airport?
Right, so that's what we were just talking about in that design option two.
Oh, that's design option two, okay.
So essentially that's this guy right here, here's your tanks here. So you can see what that feasible route was. And obviously you can go in different directions during that BS, through that BLM parcel. Typically you'll go through the surrounding boundaries of those parcels. So you don't lock any, like for instance, running it down the center of a parcel usually isn't ideal unless that owner has that idea in mind because it's just got this big transmission in it and you're trying to.
So that'd be an increased cost of a one point two million dollars. Plus we'd have to have all easement, uh, from those property owners.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
So I'm just gonna throw something out here that is definitely an increase. And I know under the contract, it, it kind of, uh, goes against the contract. Our public works director one time commented on, um, he'd been over to Crescent Valley looking at their arsenic treatment plant. Anybody ever think about putting a small arsenic treatment plant at the airport area with the wells there to treat the water? Because one thing you're looking at, bringing water from the wells now, from the, the south wells to the airport is, you know, there are times of the year that there's a lot more demand. And I don't know the specifics on those wells, I just don't really have a whole lot of faith in them. Is we're creating another well system, is we're creating a separate well system with the potable water in another area.
with the potable water in another area that could supply. And I know it's not necessarily as cost effective, but on the other hand, it's also looking towards the future.
So, uh, originally, the, there's, these were studies done a while before my time here at Lander County. Uh, but essentially, working with, uh, some of the sub consultants at Lander County uses, the wells in that area do not provide any remotely close to water quality standards. What my experience has been just in the last few years is we seem to be finding all the good water near the golf course area.
And that's why I mentioned the arsenic treatment.
Even just kind of like, yeah, so.
You can't even do, you can't even treat it enough for that.
Absolutely. You could, you could treat it isolated. Again, isolated water treatment facilities has never been a good, uh, good idea. If you look at some of the, uh, growing cities in the area, they'll have these isolated treatment facilities all over their community, and then they'll eventually just get it to one because keeping that facility operational for just that area is not cost effective. Whereas if you're going to do a treatment facility, which I believe is in your long-term plan, you'd be trying to treat it for the entire community to feed it to a source location and then pump it or allow it to gravity feed to wherever you want it to go. And that's why this airport water line project, I mean, cost effectively is the best option in terms of getting water out there. Try to get isolated resources is, is a problem.
You have a bachelor's degree in engineering or a master's?
I have a couple of different degrees. But, uh, yeah, I have a degree in engineering and I have a degree in land surveying and geomatics.
And sulfacations?
I have a professional engineering license.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Thank you, Aaron. I was just curious.
Come on up, Jay.
Merry Christmas to you, heart. Jay, went on for the record. As he discussed, I'm one of the other landowners. I have no problem giving any easements to county needs. I've always worked with the county to support their needs. Anywhere you need to go across my property, feel free to ask, and it more likely will be granted.
Well, I appreciate that, Jay. And which are you?
What's your, what'd you say? The parcels.
Yeah, which parcel are you? Are you the one?
Well, the first two of these. He moved it so he didn't have to take down existing water line, was my suggestion.
Yeah, he's two on the left of that.
Okay, and then we have three on cooperative. And who's the other one here? Nevada lands?
I think that's where you're at.
No. The last one, well, there's, there's one part.
Yeah, Nevada land is right here.
Thank you.
A fifty-eight, fifty-three acre parcel and then Nevada lands.
Well, I mean, looking at costs, there's only two options. You either do B, BLM or you do the eminent domain action, but that doesn't need timeframes.
BLM is a possible and, and eminent domain is not for a timeframe, that's it. So.
Do we have any other public comment? Nevada lands coming up here? Are you Nevada lands?
Uh, yeah. Uh, actually, verification. I'll just come up.
Thank you.
Isaac Morrison for the record, Battle Mountain Land Company, point of clarification. Um, Battle Mountain Land Company and New Nevada Lands have absolutely nothing to do with each other. Just FYI. So the contract, um, I technically work for New Nevada Lands, but that's a whole separate entity. I'm an owner of Battle Mountain Land Company. Um, and we're, again, totally separate. Um, uh, so with that, um, uh, yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm here if you guys have any questions on where we stand on the, on the parcel for Battle Mountain Land Company, on the easement, but just a point of clarification.
You want the fire loops to go through?
We are absolutely in favor of infrastructure development, um, in communities such as Battle Mountain.
And you have no problem giving us C sub?
No, not at all. Um, and also, I, you know, without getting into too many of the nuances of the existing contract, um, I don't know, um, how we would define this, but there is clauses in there, um, for, uh, force majeure type situations or, or situations that might arise that, that cause extensions of, of, um, or delays, I should say. So, yeah, we're not, we're gonna, we're not going to try and beat up the county too bad, so.
We're going to look very closely at those things, too.
Yeah.
Recorders are working, right?
Okay, board.
Um. So do we just move forward with the BLM option? That's what I'm hearing.
We have to do something, I think. I mean, we can afford the twenty-five, five, fifty. And we certainly want the flow rate at the, at the airport to be correct. I mean, we, we were the only county in the state that got two million dollars from the FAA, so we must be doing something right with our airports.
What status? Our future industrial park we're looking at? It's like, it just, it makes sense, you know?
Get ready for the growth. It's inevitable. I mean, look at Fernley and, and Love Lock, for goodness sakes. Winamaka, Alco. We're, we're on a, we're on the line.
Go for it, Donnie.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we go with the option using the BLM land, which will be an increase for twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I know that this is against what the engineer is recommending, and I want to put that in there too.
Wait, wait, wait.
I thought he said he didn't want it on the federal land.
Oh, no. I just said as a pro and con. I was just giving you the con of it, but that is not right.
No, no.
Both options have to do with, with BLM, so. So there's option one and option two.
Okay.
Option one, just move back down to both of them.
One A. Option one A.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back. You'll, you'll try that one more time, Mark.
Okay. Uh, go with option one A, an increase of twenty-five, five hundred and fifty, um, hopefully we can get this project done.
I have a question on that. Do we want to put an amount on it?
Probably not. Well, ask what's on the paper.
That's, yeah.
But it still could be an estimate.
That's the increase.
But these, these are approximate costs.
Probably, yeah.
They're approximate because we don't have the engineering cost in there either.
That's right.
So if you want to try the motion again, we'll just go with option one to the BLM.
My motion will be to go with option one. One second.
Okay, our, made the motion and Brian seconded that. Um, we have, any other discussion? Okay, with that, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because of my personal relationship with the owners of the property, and I don't trust a single one of you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I, I hope it works out with the timeframe. It's a sad situation that we are, we're in, but I appreciate all of your deliberation and your, your concerns. So thank you. Well, move on. And thank you, Aaron. Would he be?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, there he is. Thank you, yes. Okay, um, fourteen, clerk's office for possible action to approve or disapprove a contract between the Lander County Clerk and Tyler Technologies and approve the chair or vice chair to sign. And this is, um, my understanding is the only option we have to move forward with this. Nothing else was available for us.
Correct. Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk. Um, Tyler is in several offices here in the courthouse. Um, our recorder's office has Tyler, uh, the treasurer's office and finance. And, um, I was going to go with debt net, and that did not work out or move forward, or there wasn't that, um, interest, I believe, I guess, on their end. So we're in a rush, and Tyler was able to step up and, and move forward for me on this.
So let me just clarify then. Do, will we have, um, a maintenance and support agreement? Is that included as part of this, or will we have to bring that forward separate, or?
Everything's included. Now, there'll be an annual fee like any other, but everything's here within this.
The support and maintenance agreement is part of it?
Correct.
Okay.
And everything you've seen looked good for legal?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
I'll make a motion. We approve a contract between the Lander County Clerk and Tyler Technologies and approve the chair or vice chair to sign.
One second. Thank you. Moved by Brian, seconded by Kathy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we know the clerk's office is moving on. Um, correspondence, number fifteen, correspondence reports, potential upcoming agenda items. Um, I know we had NACO in January, but I'm not sure when. If you can verify the date on that.
You'll be, uh, first meeting, you'll be voting for your chair, vice chair and board opponent?
Yes. Okay. Okay, with that, I'll move into public comment. This is Bernard, just non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item on the group board meeting if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and matter. A public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Yes, we do have public comment?
Yes. Uh, Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk. Um, I wanted to apologize for the shuffling of the tables up here. Um, we're kind of looking at, um, possible upgrade, which I know it shouldn't sound like an upgrade for our cameras in here. Um, uh, as, as you speak on the microphone, the camera is to go to the direction of the person speaking. So we were trying to capture the people that were standing here, um, just to kind of give you heads up. But for whatever reason, there's just not that spanned or whatever it may be. So, um, I've touched base with Keith. I've talked with, with Robert at the sheriff's office, um, with him having some knowledge of the technical type stuff. And so I just want to give you heads up that, um, that there may be something that we come before the commissioners to try to make it better because it wasn't set up as well as we would have liked. So anyway, I apologize for the shuffling, but that's kind of what's going on. Um, when we do have a presentation, I was hoping to capture, um, them standing here with a camera. And of course, I kind of turned and looked at Robert, and he could see my camera, that we can hear Aaron or Chad. And you can hear him, but you can't see him. So I was hoping. So anyway, I just apologize for that, and that's, that's what's kind of going on. Thank you much.
Thank you. Um, in closing, I want to say, um, so this is my last. We have another public comment. Donnie?
Donald Negro for the record. Uh, I just want you to know that we oppose the line one, as, you know, Bart and I. So we'll see you in court.
That, that's an agenda item, and it's not appropriate for public comment.
You didn't call, you didn't call for any more comment, and I wasn't done talking when you closed.
You don't call for public comment after each one, but thank you. Um, with that, in closing, I want to say, um, this is my last meeting as chair, and I sincerely want to thank my commissioners for the opportunity, um, of chairing that. And to our citizens, um, thank you. It's been a very humbling and challenging year, and, um, we wish you all the beautiful magic of the holiday seasons. May you all be safe and enjoy. With that, motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved to second in all favor.
Aye.